Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Albany City Council Meeting, Wednesday, June 14th, 2023, at 6:00 PM. Would you please call the meeting to order and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the United States, one nation, under God, in the great and wonderful liberty of this country.
Allison, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Counselor McGee.
Present.
Counselor Novak.
Here.
Counselor Newton.
Present.
Counselor Kopczynski.
Here.
Counselor Monague.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Next is a proclamation. Is he bringing it up? Oh, there it is. Proclamation, June 19th, not June 19th, June 19th, 2023. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1, 1863, declaring enslaved Africans and their descendants and Confederate territories free, paving the way for passage of the 13th Amendment, which formally abolishes slavery in the United States of America. Whereas the Emancipation Proclamation provided the legal framework for the emancipation of nearly all four million slaves, and whereas on June 19th, 1865, almost two and a half years later, Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, and announced the end of both civil war and slavery. And whereas June 19th has a special meaning in Americans of African ancestry, it is called Juneteenth, combining the words June and 19th, and has been celebrated by African-American community for over 150 years. Whereas Oregon's constitutional ban on both slavery and free Americans of African ancestry or descent laid the foundation for the generations of economic hardship, exclusion, and discrimination against Oregon's African-American community, and whereas despite these obstacles, Americans of African ancestry in Oregon have been and continue to be a dynamic and vital community members and leaders within our state. And Juneteenth has been declared, celebrated in Oregon since 1945, and the Oregon Legislature unanimously voted to recognize Juneteenth as a legal state holiday beginning in 2022. Now, therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2023, to be Juneteenth in the City of Albany, and urge all citizens to become more aware of the significance of celebration of African-American history and the heritage of our nation and city. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 14th day of June, 2023. Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor. Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is a couple special presentations. First, we'll start with the Fire Chief, new firefighter swearing-in ceremony. Fire Chief Shane Wooten.
All right. Does it work? All right. Good evening. Nope, still not working. The headlights.
Nice and bad.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, council staff. Like to introduce myself. My name is Shane Wooten. I'm Fire Chief of the Albany Fire Department. And for the family members of our newest firefighters, I'd like to welcome you to the City of Albany and the Albany City Council Meeting, and would like to personally thank you for putting your loved ones on loan to us and supporting them as they serve our wonderful community. So what I'm going to do is how we'll operate here. I'm going to ask the six firefighters to come up. We're going to line up right here. We'll go through just a couple of brief words, and then each firefighter, after I introduce them, they'll ask their loved one or significant other to come up to pin them, and the mayor will give you your badge, and you can pin them, and then we'll rotate through and finish up. So, please, let's start with Davis Blackman, Christopher Kincaid, Gavin Larson, Graham Stephan, Anthony Temple, and Griffin Whitney. Okay, so I promised the mayor I would be brief with my comments, so I'll do my best. But I do want to address the six of you and wrote down a couple of words I wanted to share. First off, you are here to serve others, okay? Please don't ever forget that. Whether that be to crawl into a burning building you've never been in before, to rescue someone in peril, or to provide advanced medical care and treatment to those who are ill, or simply just to provide comfort and hold somebody's hand in their time of need, you must always, always remember, you are here not for yourself and your own ambitions, but you're here for others. The oath you will be taking, or the oath you will take after receiving your badge is not just a few meaningless words. The words in this oath should never be taken lightly. They are your promise and your commitment to integrity, honor, service, and trust. So when you raise your right hand in front of your family, friends, coworkers, and the community that puts its trust in you, know the words you promise are a solemn commitment to all those who stand before you, so please don't let them down. So with that being said, we'll start with firefighter Davis Blackman. You'd say who is going to pin you?
My girlfriend, Mackenzie Virtue.
Firefighter Christopher Kincaid.
My father, Chief Michael Kincaid.
That's very cool.
Firefighter Gavin Larson.
My mother, Alicia Smith.
Firefighter Graham Stephan.
My wife, Courtney.
Firefighter Anthony Temple.
My mother, Chief Mariana Reese Temple.
All right, and firefighter Griffin Whitney.
Hello, my mom.
What's your mom's name?
Lisa Whitney, wonderful mother.
So before these gentlemen are sworn in, I'd like to say thank you for serving, electing to serve the City of Albany in this capacity. I always believe you do what you love in the service of those that love what you do. Our fire department is an amazing fire department. I brag about it all over town, all over the state, no matter where I travel, I talk about our firefighters and the people who work in the fire department. So thank you all, gentlemen, for electing to serve with us, serve for us, and I'm looking forward to meeting you all in town.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, if you would raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Anthony Temple.
From this day forward. To openly pledge and freely declare. That I will faithfully serve. And fulfill my duties. As a professional firefighter for the Albany Fire Department. And the citizens of Albany. The surrounding communities. And the state of Oregon. Congratulations. Okay, thank you, everybody, for participating with us, and if any of the family members want to stay for the City Council Meeting, you are more than welcome. If you don't want to stay for the City Council Meeting, now would be a great time for all of us to walk out into the hallway and take some pictures. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming this evening.
We should welcome ourselves right on up here.
Keep it moving. Got to keep it moving.
So when things settle down, we'll get started, continuing the agenda. Can you pull that door, please? Thank you very much. Next on tonight's agenda, no special presentation, Human Relations Commission Annual Awards and Annual Report. And I have Chair Kohkow.
Hello, Mayor.
And Director Ladain.
Hi, good evening. Thank you all, Mayor and council, for having us this evening. I have the easy job, is I get to introduce Keith Kohko, who is the Chair of the Human Relations Commission, as he's going to be taking it away.
Hello, Mayor and City Councilors. You should have received a copy of our Human Relations Report in the Agenda Packet, which includes highlights from every month of the year, and from there, I'll just go through the final page, which states, "The Albany Human Relations Commission was established to foster a city that is stable, safe, and just. The Commission is established by the Albany City Council with the purpose of strengthening and celebrating every resident of Albany. It is committed to the philosophy of acceptance, inclusion, equal opportunity, accessibility, dignity, and fair treatment for all. Throughout the majority of 2022, our Commission dedicated time to planning community outreach and participating in local events. Commissioners set up tables at the farmer's market on multiple occasions and attended or volunteered at numerous local events. Our monthly meetings hosted leaders from local nonprofit organizations, school administrators, directors in higher education, county health employees, and our Chief of Police. As Chair of the Human Relations Commission, I have two recommendations for the council to consider. The council and the Commission should initiate a collaborative effort to determine an appropriate name that better reflects our role in the community. During the drafting of the next budget, a small allocation should be made to support the work of the Commission. The Commission has received multiple requests to support local events that align with our mission, which we're unable to support monetarily through donations or sponsorships. With consideration of the aforementioned items, the Commission will be able to fulfill our mission and make a more significant contribution to the city's strategic plan. It is a great honor to serve the community alongside our fellow commissioners. Additionally, the Commission would like to express our sincere appreciation and gratitude to our staff liaison, Kim Ladain, and recorder Gina Barret, and all other staff members who have provided assistance or covered for them in their absence. Their exceptional work in supporting the Commission is highly valued and acknowledged." Does anyone have any questions about the report?
It was beautifully done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very thorough report, so thank you for that. Continuing the work of my counterpart over here, so good job. Good job.
Now we're going to go to the second part. So be brief, be bright, be gone. So we are very thankful as we have the opportunity tonight to present the 2022 Human Relations Award. So once again, I'll turn it over to Keith to present our individual, the award to our individual recipient.
Awesome. Would you like to join me down here, Mayor?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
I'd be honored.
The first award that we will be presenting tonight is for the organization category, and we would like to honor Jackson Street Youth Services. Jackson Street Youth Services is an organization serving youth in our community, promoting safety, stability, and well-being for youth, preventing homelessness by showing a path to long-term success through building positive relationships and teaching skills for self-sufficiency. Our second presentation tonight will be in the individual category, and tonight we'll be presenting it to Javier Cervantes. Javier Cervantes has been instrumental in the greater Albany area for many years and is a former Human Relations Commission Chair. Javier's contributions to building an equitable and just community in a professional and personal capacity have been invaluable. He has trained hundreds of residents and employees in our local institutions on bias, built systems to help protect students' rights to safe education, and done all of this work with a lens of intersectionality, which makes an even greater impact. Javier always shows up authentically to further the work of equity, diversity, and inclusion. The work of EDI is very difficult work, balancing the demanding expectations of many stakeholders, some of whom are unfamiliar or uncomfortable with your work and can put your own mental health and personal safety at risk. For his many contributions and personal sacrifices, Javier should easily be one of the most deserving recipients of the Albany Human Relations Award, for without him and other commissioners, this award may not even exist. Thank you all, and like Chief Wooten said, we are concluded with our part of the evening, and if that's all you came for, now would be a good time to leave.
Thank you. Public hearing. Five public hearings. Let's see what's next. So, thank you all again for being here this evening. Next on tonight's agenda is a series of public hearings, so bear with us as we get through each one of these. We'll be reading scripts and following the procedure by law.
Mr. Mayor, before you go into public hearings, if I could just point to one minor agenda change.
Okay.
And that is, under Staff Reports Number 13, 13B has been moved up to the consent agenda.
Okay.
So if you just strike that from your agenda.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, City Manager, Peter. Next on tonight's agenda is a public hearing on the extension of Economic Improvement District in downtown Albany. Directions on how to testify and submit written materials were published in the council agenda. I declare the public hearing open at 6:21 PM. Does the staff have a report?
Good evening. This is the second of two public hearings that are required to establish the EID. This is something we've had in place for a very long time. We currently have remonstrances at total 22%, which is under the 33% that would not allow it to go forward. So if anybody has any questions, be more than happy to answer them. Otherwise, we would like approval for this EID to go through.
So we're going to get down to that. No one submitted any written materials? No one has registered to speak virtually? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this issue? No hands? I declare the public hearing closed at 6:22 PM. Council, now it's time for discussion. Any questions, council? It seemed pretty cut and dry to me. Council, do you have anything?
Nope, it was very straightforward.
We all agree? Okay. There's an ordinance in page 12 of your Agenda Packet. Would a council like to make a motion?
Move for the first reading of the ordinance in title only.
Second.
A motion on the second, on the first reading? Yeah. Yes. Oh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. City Attorney.
An ordinance creating an economic improvement district in accordance with ORS 223.112 through 223.132.
Move to read the ordinance a second time in title only.
A motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Please.
An ordinance creating an economic improvement district in accordance with ORS 223.112 through 223.132.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. There you have it. Motion passes. Ordinance passes.
We haven't voted on the ordinance. That was the second, we voted on the second reading.
We did vote on the second reading just now.
But we haven't voted to adopt it.
Oh, okay. So do we have a motion to adopt?
I move to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion on the second on adoption. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Motion's adopted.
Thank you.
That was short. Next on tonight's agenda is a public hearing on 2021 through 2023 supplemental budget. Directions on how to testify and submit written materials were published in the Agenda Packet. Okay, thank you. I declare the public hearing open I declare the public hearing open at 6:24 PM. Does the staff have a report?
I do, thank you. So, this year, we have proposed supplemental changes that total about 7.8 million. It's a little, just, so some of those include transfers. So, if you have, you're transferring money from one fund to another fund, that counts as part of that number. And then if you're allocating those funds within the fund it's going to, that also is counted. So, some of these numbers are kind of double counted. Honestly, the real reason for supplemental budget this, this time is that costs, contractual costs skyrocketed. As an example, in the memo that I included, we have banking trust fees that went from about $3,000 a year to between $3,000 and $4,000 a quarter. And, you know, our budget was pretty conservative to begin with, and so we just needed to have those funds. If you want, if you have any questions about any of the specific items, they're listed out in the memo, what the different allocations are for, the different appropriations, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, well, I'll get through the rest of this thing here. No one submitted any written materials for this topic? No one registered to speak virtually? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak regarding this matter? I declare the public hearing closed at 6:26 PM. Counsel, discussion time? Counsel, anything? Okay. There's a resolution on page 21 of your packet. Would a counsel like to make a motion?
I'd move to adopt the resolution on page 21, the resolution adopting the supplemental budget for biennium 2021-23. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Thank you very much, Gina, for your presentation, Director. We have one, two more. Next on tonight's agenda is Planning Division Fee Adjustments. Directions on how to testify and submit written materials were published on the agenda packet, means council agenda. I declare the public hearing open at 6:26 PM. Does the staff have a report?
Yes, sir, a very brief one. David Martino, Planning. The fee request here is 4.62% increase from April 2022 to April 2023. That figure represents the CPIW that went up this year, which is about half of what it went up last year. And if these fees are adopted, the effective date of the fee changes will be July 1st, 2023. Additionally, the Building Division that you'll hear about tonight is proposing a reduction of their plan review fee from 65% to 50% across the board. The implications for that for planning is that planning charges a 15% fee based on the building permit review fee. So, when you drop it from 65 to 50%, it also lowers our cost recovery. And so, right now, the cost recovery is 15%. We're suggesting 20% for us to at least hold the line, or 25% to start to look more towards cost recovery. And so, those options are for you to decide tonight.
Okay. So, thank you very much. No one submitted any written materials? No one's registered to speak virtually? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this topic? I declare the public hearing closed at 6:28 PM. Counsel, let's discuss. Any discussion?
So, the resolution in front of us, is it at the 20% or 25%?
The resolution in front of you looks at the approval of the, of the planning fee increases, so it would include that figure, whether you choose 20 or 25%.
Counsel, any other questions? Comments? Next, there's a resolution on page 32 of your packet. Would a counsel like to make a motion?
I move that we adopt the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Thank you. Motion passes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are we passing it with 20% or 25% for the recovery fee?
Did you, did you, he didn't ask for that, did he? Oh.
Yeah, I thought it was either.
Right, so if you wanted to raise our planning fee from 15 to 20% or 25%, that would be the choice that you could make. If you do 20%.
And 25% gets us closer to cost recovery.
It does, ma'am, yes.
And I move that we adopt the resolution at 25%.
We have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed say no? Thank you.
Thank you.
But I wasn't clear that you were asking us to make a choice, so that's, I'm glad you asked the question.
Okay, thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda is a public hearing on Building Division Fee Adjustments. Directions on how to testify and submit written materials were published in the council agenda. I declare the public hearing open at 6:30 PM. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, a brief one. Good evening, Mayor, Counsel. We've talked to you guys about this proposed fee increase at two work sessions, and it was previously noticed with the Building Codes Division in April 30th of this year. The fee increase would set the fees for the building program for the coming year, and as detailed out in the memo, increases our base fees and our hourly fees from, most of them are at $75, to $85 to help cost recovery of staff. And then plan review fees, as was previously mentioned, we're proposing to reduce those down to 50% in categories where they're above 50% and increase them in areas that were below 50%. So, that way, we have a standardized 50% across the board. And then we're making structural changes to the actual structural fee table by combining what was segregated between one and two family projects and commercial multifamily projects to use one valuation fee table, so that way, it's easier for customers and staff. And then, we also took the time to review the entire fee table and make some major adjustments in certain areas to remove fees that were not being used, that when we did our cost recovery analysis, were either too high, so we're reducing fees in certain areas, and then just removing stuff that was, ones that were not technically within our purview. And then, as the memo details out, we're making significant changes to the temporary certificate occupancy fee by moving it to the residences regardless of if they're multifamily or one and two dwellings into a single category. Commercial, industrial, institutional goes into a separate category, and then those fees, if someone chooses to request a certificate, a temporary certificate occupancy prior to the project being finalized, would go to by unit or by tenant suite if it's commercial. And then, in the electrical fee program, a little more straight, clear, the target was a 10% increase across those. As the memo details out, the last fee increases for the building inspection program was January of 2020. And for clarification, I noticed on the BCD notice, I accidentally put January 2019 as 2020. And then the electrical program has not seen a fee increase since February of 2010. That's it for my report.
So, thank you for the report, Jonathan.
One side note, you should have on your dais a memo or a letter from the Home Builders Association in support of the fee increase.
So, yeah, counsel, we do have a letter that was passed to us in support of it. We have one submitted item. We have one person that signed up to speak in the audience. It's Sid Lichen in the building.
Hi, Sid. Long time no see. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Sid Lichen, and I'm the executive officer of the Western Oregon Builders Association. Closer? So, if you haven't known, or if you haven't heard, the Willamette Valley Home Builders Association, Elaine County Home Builders Association merged. And so, we're one regional trade association representing Lane, Lynn, Benton, and Lincoln Counties. And this is unusual for us, where normally, our association would oppose any sorts of fees. But as you can see by the outline of the letter, we're gonna support you. We think it's very important, and, and we're very, very pleased to do so. On a side note, I'd like to, for you to know that I actually served the city of Springfield as a councillor and mayor for 12 years, and Lane County Commissioner for eight years. And the last time I was here in Albany, I had to eat crow when Sharon was the mayor, because in 2008, West Albany and Thurston played in the high school championship. In fact, the, that was the one year the polls got it right, because they were number one and number two all season long and actually played in the championship. Had to come here, we had a bet, I lost, we came, and I came up here and ate a crow, but...
My son played on that team.
Yeah, well, anyway. But please, please note that we are supporting the city in this, in this fee request and look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your presence today. So, does anyone else in the audience wish to speak? Thank you, Sid.
Yes.
Oh, please. Please identify yourself and please have a seat.
I'm Nathan Vanek, and I am currently...
A little closer to the microphone, please.
I would like to embolden you guys' faith in your project with regarding the home support.
So, is this, wait, have a seat, please.
And...
Is this in regard to this public hearing?
All right, there we go.
Look, excuse me, sir. Is this in regard to this public hearing? We have, business from the public is coming up. This is not, this is not business from the public. This is a public hearing addressing these fee adjustments. So, you're gonna, could you wait till the business from the public piece? It's coming up.
You're hard, so hard to hear, and I don't have my hearing aids in.
So, this is not business from the public. That's coming up later in the agenda.
Is it?
Yes. Have a seat, and we'll call you back up.
I have a seven o'clock meeting. I will have to do it in two weeks. But I wanted to embolden everybody's faith in the scripture with regards to tending to the poor and not turning back on them.
Thank you.
With regards to your...
See you in two weeks. See you in two weeks. I declare the public hearing closed at 6:36 PM. Counsel, time for discussion?
I have a comment.
Please. Counsel Smith?
I am impressed with the detailed, well, with going through every last fee to evaluate which ones are used and which ones aren't, and which ones can be combined, and which ones are past their pull date, and this is like cleaning out the cupboards after 30 years. So, I appreciate that kind of effort. It's, it's useful for staff and it's useful for the public, very, much easier to understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I know the home builders, they reached out to me about it, and they were quite happy, and not just him, but other ones that I've known throughout my time in Albany. So, well done. Glad you took a look at it. Any other counselors? Thank you. There's a motion or a resolution in your package on page 37?
I move we approve a resolution revising the Building Division fees and repealing resolution number eight, or 5891, and that's it.
Would a counsel like to make, oh, we had a major motion, we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Thank you, motion passes. Good luck. Phew. Okay. This is the one. Next on tonight's agenda is a quasi judicial public hearing regarding planning files CU 04-04-23 and VR-02-23. Proposal is to modify the approved conditional use, CU, conditional use permit to utilize zoning, excuse me, existing emergency access as an employee access and emergency access in a minor variance in the minimum driveway width of 24 feet for two-way driveway to keep it existing access at 20 feet wide. I call the order, call to order the quasi judicial public hearing at 6:38 PM. If you wish to testify, there are three options available, which are, which were described in the agenda. Do any members wish to declare a conflict of interest? Hearing none? Do any members wish to report and ex parte contact?
I just want to declare that I did attend the planning commission meeting when this was heard.
And I have received several emails regarding this topic, and I forward them forward. Thank you. Do any members wish to report a site visit? Do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings? Does anyone wish to challenge the city council's right to determine this matter or the participation of any council member in the hearing and decision? If so, please raise your hand, and if you are attending in person, if you are attending virtually, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon. And if you're attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so you can be called upon. At this time, I call the reading of the meeting procedures.
For all those wishing, excuse me, to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the city council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed toward the approval standards staff will describe or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code that you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue recludes an action for damages in circuit court.
Thank you. At this time, I call the staff report from project planner Jennifer Sappelo. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I bring before you a modification of a conditional use review and a minor variance known as land use file CU 0423 and VR 0223. The modification of a conditional use review is the applicant proposes to utilize an existing emergency access off of Lyons Street as an employee access and as an emergency access. This is for the Gap's bus barn, which was approved through a previous conditional use review, which was CU 1017. The minor variance is to the minimum two-way travel aisle, standard of 24 feet to utilize the existing 20-foot wide emergency access. The land use process, it goes out to public notice, and it is posted on the property. And then it was, went to the planning commission hearing for recommendation to the city council. You guys are having your city council hearing tonight, and then this is appealable to Luba. The subject property is located at 2485 Ferry Street. The property is split zone with light industrial and residential medium density. The bus barn itself is located on the light industrial portion of the property, and the parking is located on the, sorry, residential mixed density. The surrounding areas, it is in the Sunrise neighborhood. To the north is bare land and industrial, and then further north is residential. East is more bare land and residential. South is residential and commercial, and west is more industrial. This, this is the proposed site plan. So, the existing emergency access is coming off of Lyons, and that's what is being reviewed today as the modification. And the modification of a conditional use application must be approved through the final review in body of the original review. The initial land use file was under ZZ 0117 at all, which approved, is approved by the city council on March 29th of 2018. The proposed modification is presented to the planning commission for recommendation to city council. The review is limited only to the area modified, so in this review, we are only looking at the emergency access, no other parts of the site plan. The concerns that have been submitted into the record...
Excuse me, you're tailing off?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, so, concerns submitted into the record are additional traffic onto 25th Avenue. There is comments about employees parking along Lyons, safety of the neighborhood, and the road is constructed as a residential right-of-way, not as a commercial, so it is narrow, and that the road surface is degrading. The options for city council tonight is to approve as proposed and conditioned, or approved with modifications, or approval of the modification of the conditional use review and denial of the variance, or denial of the proposal in total. And that concludes my staff report.
Thank you very much. Does any council members have clarifying questions regarding the staff report? Counsel Novak is first up.
Yeah, my question is, why do they need to change where the employees come and go off the main street?
So, that would be a question you would want to ask the applicants. I don't, wasn't provided in the review.
Is the applicant's here?
The applicant's representative is here.
They will bring them up when it's time. So, they'll bring them up when it's time for them to speak. Any other questions, counsel? Question for staff, please?
So, I see our different options here. What is the option, if we denied the variance, does that just mean they were able to use
they were able to use that as an employee entrance, but they have to widen it to 25 feet? Is that what that means?
Correct, yeah.
Just want to make sure I was clear on that. Thank you.
Yeah, it'd be 24 feet, so not pull 25.
So is it already 24 feet?
It's currently 20 feet and the proposal is to keep it at 20. And then if the variance was denied, it would have to be increased to 24 feet. So an additional two feet on each side.
So has our traffic person looked at the entrance and exit?
Correct.
And they're okay with 20?
In, yes.
Counselors.
Do we know how many vehicles will be driving through? Like how many employees will be utilizing this driveway? And also if there is bicycle parking as well onsite, anyone that'll be driving the buses?
Yeah, so the site currently does have bicycle parking. There is not exact numbers as employees change over the years, but this would be a secondary employee access with one still existing on Ferry. So some employee parking or employee transportation will come through Ferry and then some would potentially come through 25th. But we don't have exact numbers.
Do we know how many current employees there are right now that park there?
I do not know. The applicant is here and they would be able to answer that question for you.
They're next up. Counselors, anybody else? Okay, thank you. We will not, one more question, I'm sorry. Buses are no longer using that access, right?
They're not allowed to use the access currently and they are not proposed to use the access.
That's my concern because the buses turn wider. That's why I was worried about the 24 feet.
And that was traffic analysis was that if we kept it at 20 feet, it would help prevent buses from using that access.
Thank you. We will now take testimony from the applicant. Would the applicant please state your name, address, and make any comments that you may have for the counsel?
Oh, you heard me. Good evening, Albany City Council. My name is Laura LaRocque. I'm with Udel Engineering and I'm representing the applicant this evening, which is GAPS, our greater Albany School District. So today you have two different applications that are under concurrent review. As staff mentioned, the first one is a modification to an approved site plan. That modification, as staff had said in their presentation, is to use a current accessway that is limited to emergency vehicles only and to allow employees of this facility to also use that entrance. The site currently has two different entrances, one off Ferry Street and one off Lyons. Currently, the one off Lyons Street is the one under discussion this evening. It is currently restricted to emergency vehicles only. We'd like to open that up to employees of the site. Second application is a variance request because the accessway off of Lyons Street was designed to emergency vehicle standards. It's slightly less than what the access standard would require under the development code, but still operates to allow two-way traffic in and out of the site. As Stephanie Newton had asked, we do have account for employees. It's included in the application's mittels. Currently, there's about 10 employees for the operation portion of the building, administrative office and some of the maintenance staff and 60 bus drivers. On a typical day, as most folks with students or who have experienced school themselves, typically you have these employees that are there to drive buses to pick up children come into the site. The Lyons Street accessway is the closest accessway to the staff or parking for the facility. So this allows that employees visiting or going to the site to park their resident, or their, excuse me, personal vehicles are able to do so without having cross traffic with bus traffic that may be leaving the site. Drivers do have often staggered shifts where some are leaving earlier than others as others are still arriving. So the main purpose, as Ms. Novak had asked, is to allow a decrease in cross traffic as bus drivers are leaving the site to allow employees to safely enter the site at a different location if they choose to. Both accessways would be available to employees entering and leaving the site. So on this one, we wouldn't necessarily change the number of trips to the site. They would just be dispersed. So employees could still choose to use the Ferry Street accessway as well as the Lyons Street accessway. Based on the current number of employees for the site, we anticipate about 70 peak hour trips in the evening to and from the site. And if those were on, a worst case scenario, those would be going to the Lyons Street, but we fully suspect that those trips would be dispersed just depending on where the employees live in the community and what's the easiest access way to get to work. As I mentioned with the accessway, it is currently designed to an emergency vehicle standard, which is just four feet less than what an accessway would be per the Albany Development Code, but still would function. And actually having a more narrow accessway helps to promote safety because folks would slow down to make those entering and exiting movements throughout the facility. So with that, I will turn it over. I guess before I do so, the staff has included two conditions of approval. One is to have the accessway off of Lyons Street to be marked with signage to further indicate that truck, delivery truck traffic and buses would not be permitted on Lyons Street. We accept that condition of approval. And I also wanted to add that the Lyons Street accessway is currently gated with a Knox box entrance for emergency vehicle providers that continue to be gated and it could be gated to decrease any possibility of cross traffic coming into the residential Lyons Street neighborhood. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation and open it up for questions.
So we will, we won't take what, we'll do. Counsel, do we have any questions for the engineer? Engineer, correct?
So I heard you say that it could be gated and I think what you're saying is after hours it would be gated?
There's a gate there currently that is locked 24 hours a day. If it was to serve for access for employees and it would be unlocked during the day and it could be gated at night, locked at night.
So it could be if we put that as a requirement or?
It could be a condition of approval or you could leave it to the property owner just to make a good decision if that becomes problematic.
Okay.
Okay. So with that, oh, go ahead, Counsel.
I'm just a little concerned because I spoke to a member of the planning commission and he said that in the initial hearing, no members of the public were there and we have heard from quite a few members of the public at this point. And they raised some issues that I find concerning. So I'm just wondering with regard to the noticing, did you all know about the original hearing? Because, yeah, that's what I was concerned about.
Please don't address the.
Pardon?
Don't address the gallery during a public hearing.
I can hear what you're saying.
Don't address the gallery during a public hearing, please.
Don't address the gallery. Okay, well then I'll look this direction. But I still have that concern if I'm looking at you rather than them. I'm very concerned because I saw many heads shake no and maybe I wasn't supposed to see their head shake no, but I think this is very concerning.
So there's going to be an opportunity to speak in a few minutes.
I'm sorry?
They'll have an opportunity to speak in a few minutes. That's next.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
We will now be taking public testimony from first those in favor of the application, followed by those in opposition or with concerns and finally anyone who is neutral. If anyone wishes to enter an exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe the exhibit and then email it to or deliver it to our city clerk. Those who registered to speak during the meeting will now be called upon and present their verbal testimony. So we had four people that signed up. Anybody in favor of the? Not looking good. So next will be those that sign up to speak during opposition. Tina Halverson, please. You have three minutes, please.
Thank you. I also sent you all an email. So first off, I want to say our neighborhood, when GAPS was being built, we did not contest it because all entering and exiting traffic would be on Ferry Street. I noticed the beginning of the year that we were getting a lot of more traffic than normal and some smaller buses. So I followed it down the street because I live on 25th to the connecting street line and the gate was open and there was people driving through as well as some of the smaller buses. And so I called the planning commission or department and left a message. I had a gentleman, I think his name was Mark, call me back and say, oh, the gate was left open. They were driving through, it's closed now. And I was raised concern at that time. Why was that, why was there so much traffic? I mean, I noticed it in less than a week. So did all my neighbors. I was told at that time that that would be for only emergency vehicles and no employees. So I've lived in our house for over 30 years and at that time it was a brand new house. No major traffic. Foxwood Court came in. It was supposed to be single-family houses or duplexes. So we got a lot more traffic down 25th because of that. If you, it affects our life right now the way it is because there's so much traffic. We don't let the kids outside without somebody there because the cars are coming or off Marion fast. They're speeding down the road. There's a lot of traffic because of all the housing. The noise is incredible because of the exhaust systems on some cars all hours of the night. You can't even hardly walk across the street to the mailbox because there's so much traffic. I'm a little nervous. So the, me and all our neighbors was not notified because there's a 300-foot rule. I live, oh, I think around 500 feet. So I was not notified. I'm on 25th. I'm the one that's going to have a lot of the traffic. So it affects all of our livelihoods. So I took, made a flyer, went door to door to all the neighbors. I talked to everybody that I could on 25th, Lyons and Foxwood Court. Not one person wants that gate made for employees. We have enough traffic as it is and we do, the noise and our road is getting terribly degraded. And we have to live there. They don't have to live there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I appreciate your testimony this evening. And I do want to apologize to Colleen Brodsky. I looked at, I just saw the handwriting and didn't see the typed in text. So Colleen, you have the floor for three minutes.
Thank you, Counsel, for allowing me to speak. I am one of the owners of C2C and we are building the subdivision, which we had intended to put single-family resident homes. Unfortunately, once we sell the lot, we have no control over what someone builds there. This is on 28th Street. So we put in the two city streets that tie into Lyons. The GAPS representative, who is an engineer and I am not, to be clear. I did my best to read the report that they submitted and they kept talking about worst case scenario of 70 employees. But when you look at the application from the Home Depot bus, from the bus lot, they actually allow for 133 employee parking spots. And so when they talk about 51 seconds, one car coming every 51 seconds, that's with employees showing up in an hour. In their own report on D8, if you read, it says the majority of employees show up at 6:30 AM. Now, most employees, just common sense, don't start coming in an hour early, 59 minutes early, 58 minutes early, every 51 seconds, right? They come in probably about 10 minutes before their shift time. So if, and I think they were appropriate in calculating worst case scenario, but they're doing it on a 50% capacity. That bus depot has full capacity of 133 employees and 133 buses. There is absolutely no way that those residential streets can handle the arterial traffic that should be on a major road. So if we look at a 10-minute timeline that the majority, in their own notes, the majority of their employees will report if they, and when they get to full capacity, we're looking at 12 cars a minute going down the streets. So every five seconds. So again, I know that they want to present it as it is today, but we have to look a little bit past today because Albany is growing, such like our subdivision. The population will increase and there will be more buses and bus drivers. They intend to put an entire fleet of bus driving people going down residential streets. The school had the opportunity and the ability to solve their own problem and instead they sold land and they got a $900,000 check for that. My recommendation is that they buy back some of the land that they sold and solve their own problem and not force that traffic through residential streets where we have children playing, we have our own cars, residential cars coming and going. It will be entirely too much. I apologize for going in.
No worries. Thank you very much for your testimony. Next is Jean, I don't want to screw this up. Hebert? Hebert. Jean Hebert, please, in opposition.
Jean Hebert, thank you for the opportunity. We own a duplex on Foxwood Court, so I'm there quite often. We don't live in it, but I take care of it. And the thing that I've observed is entering that bus area from Ferry, that's a primarily a commercial street. So the people coming and going are going to affect practically no one. But if they came in on either 25th or 28th, which 28th is now putting in another apartment-sized places on 28th. But if you come out 25th, you're dead end of Ferry. Then you, in the Lyons, in the Lyons, you turn right. And what's terrible about this situation is the congestion. But all of the mailboxes for that area are on Foxwood Court and Lyons. You'd be surprised at how many children cross that street constantly. It's not when it's mail time. I mean, there's children, it's a low in, not low income. It's a new opportunity for people to move into duplexes and things like that. So we have tons of children and the children are, it's going to be a very dangerous, very dangerous situation, I think, for the children. So I would just highly recommend that there be an alternative to entering that bus.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate that. Next is David Reese, in opposition.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is David Reese and I'm here, actually on behalf of Colleen and Colleen. The subdivision, that is the Colonnade subdivision, is the subdivision we, as Reese Engineering, presented before the planning commission 2017 or 19, was approved and is built. And we went through some of the same criteria that the bus barn has gone through with regard to separating commercial traffic from residential traffic because the property that was owned, that is owned by the Colleens, actually fronts Ferry and fronts Marion. But the decision through the planning commission was that we were not to mix traffic and mix uses by having residential folks go onto Ferry for safety reasons because it's in an industrial zone and to that end have actually fences and provide buffering so that we don't have children that go make their way to Ferry Street. So with that, I respect the decision and the land use hearings that were put together for the original proposal, which was a site plan that in fact had a very adequate drive aisle for both employees and buses to make their way to Ferry Street to do their business because that's a commercial arterial or collector. But then to come back and then to have an emergency access only for emergency vehicles that would go on to Lyons be gated in the event that it's necessary for access and then to come back and ask permission to have special treatment for their employees, to have two opportunities to make their way out is not really fair. And I guess that's the criteria I'm going to use. It's not really fair when others have been asked to follow the rules and to not mix commercial and residential. And now we're being asked to give special provisions to folks that are going to actually provide quite a bit of traffic as all these residents have already said. And during the construction of Colonnade, I experienced watching those children play as we developed that subdivision and I wholeheartedly agree with that. In addition, the variance from 24 to 20 feet. In addition, the variance from 24 to 20 feet, I think, should be denied. I think it should be widened at 24. All of us in the development world have to go through and meet the criteria for drive aisle access for two-way streets. And that's 24 feet, or in parking lots, 26 feet. And to go to 20 feet is adds a safety concern, in my opinion. And with that, I hope that you deny it.
Thank you very much, David. Appreciate it. We will now be taking public testimony from those who did not register to speak beforehand. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand. If you're attending in person, if you're attending virtually, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon. Or if you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so you can be called upon. Anyone in the chambers like to speak? Please come up, sir? Both of you. So he'll go first, then you can come up. You guys together? So one after another. So when he comes, when he finishes, you can come up.
Want him to come up first?
It's up to you. You were closer. Go ahead and see.
I come up. I would just like, uh, my name's Gary Hines. I live on 25th Marion, the corner. And my big concern, even if you pass or not, I'm, my thing is that right now, there's still half employees are coming over there, parking and walking onto the lot. There, and I think when you do deny it, we should be able to put signs there that says, no parking. They're literally still blocking it. So, and I went and looked at the way they go in and out of the place. And the biggest problem is that the buses and the cars cannot go through there very well. That's why they're trying to separate these two people. I mean, it's just not, to me, they got kind of crazy. They didn't build the road big enough for a bus and a car to go through. I had trouble going through there with a bus coming in. So that's my only comment on it. So.
Thank you very much, sir.
Hello, Mayor and City Council members. Rick Garrison, I'm actually a current resident of the neighborhood. And I just want to continue to emphasize the issue of the fact that there are constantly small children playing on the streets. There's a lot of bicycle traffic. You put this traffic through a couple of times a day. You've got people trying to back out of their driveways that are going to be affected. And this could be backed up, who knows, at times. And I just feel it's a bad idea and feel so it should be denied as well.
Thank you. So this is kind of like a duplicate here. So does any member of the audience wish to speak in favor of the application? I see no one raising their hand. Does any member of the audience wish to speak in opposition or express concerns about the application? So it's a duplicate. And everybody spoke. You have some, please? Opposition or in favor?
Uh, against it.
Okay, have a seat.
I'm Richard Woodington. I also live on 25th and Marion. And things that we observed in our neighborhood didn't happen 10 years ago or, or even five years ago. But we have big trucks going down there, and that back gate, I have never seen it closed or locked. I have seen trash company go through that back gate. I have seen what I thought, and I think, was a fuel truck go through that back gate. And I have seen other delivery trucks go through that back gate. Construction, when they were building that, they used our streets to go up and down, big trucks. So this is what we're concerned about. Because if a child runs out in front of a big truck, are you going to see it? You going to see that little child? And we do have children that don't pay any attention. You did it when you was a kid, of traffic on the road. So, and your parents were concerned. We also are concerned about the children in the neighborhood. But that back gate, they say it's always closed and locked? No, I've checked it a few times. It's been closed, but there's no lock on it. I'm looking at a padlock and a chain. Doesn't happen.
Nothing. Thank you, Richard. Good to see you again.
Yeah. And by the way, I, I hope the council goes against it. Or they can come up with some other ideas that will suit both sides here.
Thank you, Richard. Does anyone else like to speak in opposition? Thank you. Does any member of the audience wish to speak neutrally of the application? Does the applicant have any rebuttal testimony?
Good evening again. So I'd like to address some of the testimony raised. So I hear a lot of concerns about conflicts with traffic and children. I will remind the commission tonight that these are bus drivers. These are folks that drive children to places that let them off to make sure that they safely cross the street. And would be very mindful, I would assume, to be aware of children in their surroundings while they're driving, not only their company vehicles, but also their personal vehicles. In terms of traffic, I hear a lot of concerns about just the sheer number and a lot of speculation about how many folks will actually utilize one exit over, or one entrance or accessway over another. On this particular one, Ferry Street is a higher volume roadway. It's likely that folks will choose that just because it's a freer flowing traffic. Traffic speeds are a little bit higher. Could be a likely choice for folks entering and exiting the site. Lion Street would add a secondary access to them that's more convenient to where the parking spaces are, to avoid some onsite conflicts or buses that are leaving or entering the site. So it would help both onsite circulation and also any conflicts that could occur on the Ferry Street side. In terms of the width, we're talking about a reduction of four feet. So to put that in perspective, an average curb width, if anyone's ever seen a curb or taken the time to take a look at it, that's about a foot. So when you're putting two feet on either side of an accessway to allow vehicles to cross either way, that would not create any unsafe situations on that particular piece. The only other thing I'd like to just add for the record is that I was not privy or have reviewed any emails that were received by the mayor or anything that was noted by Ms. Novak. So if there's any other concerns that have not been brought to my attention, I'd be happy to address those this evening. Otherwise.
They're pretty much, mine is pretty much the same as what I'm hearing here.
The same.
Mine too. I have a couple of them. They're the same.
Yes, they're all the same.
Yeah. So when I reached out to staff this morning, I've only been provided one piece of written testimony in advance of the hearing and I have not had the opportunity to review or also respond to any other testimony that may have been received.
Thank you.
So with that, I'll wrap up my.
She has a question?
Yes.
Counselor Montague?
So it sounds like, from what I'm, I'm hearing you say is that this is a, a solution to some traffic conflict that you're experiencing or the applicant is experiencing. What other solutions have they came up with or tried? Have they tried other measures to alleviate those conflicts, the traffic conflicts that they're already experiencing?
Yeah, I don't know if it's specifically to address a conflict. I mean, when you take a look at a planning application, this is years before a site had been constructed. When you're approving something at the planning commission stage, this is just when plans are put on paper and they haven't even gone through final engineering. It's not uncommon for a developer to construct something or to be under construction and asked to deviate from what they originally proposed.
Yeah.
So this is just essentially one of those deviations. It helps the site function. It allows their employees to have two ways to access the site. Lion Street connects with two other roadways to Marion Street, which serves a higher volume of roadway traffic. Both of these streets that serve the site from that side are fully improved to city standards. And they offer just some more options for their employees to, to enter and exit the site. In terms of other options, the site only has two roadway franchises. This is the only two points that allow a connection with those roadways. Any other portion within there would impact natural resources such as wetlands that are further to the north of the site that the parking lot for the employees have been constructed around. And the rest of the facility has been fully constructed to allow for transportation patterns for the buses to operate, to maneuver onsite. So there wasn't a lot of other options, is the short answer to that. Okay.
So anybody else? Counselor Smith?
I have a couple of questions. I am curious about the number of parking spaces in the employing parking area. Is that overbuilt? Or is it anticipating future growth in the number of needed employees there, needed bus drivers as the district grows? It sounds like a lot of parking spaces for 70 employees.
It is, yeah. So the Albany Development Code, as it is currently written, does typically provide an overabundance of parking spaces for any type of use. This use is not unique in that aspect. As I mentioned, there's just 10 operation folks and about 60 bus drivers. These bus drivers enter the sites at varying times because their routes vary. And so when they arrive and when they leave vary, because their routes are not all the same. And so when you're talking or taking a look at the site plan, you can tell that the parking far exceeds the 60 amount of, 60 employees that are there currently.
Thank you.
Typical American parking lot.
Yes.
Counselor Newton?
I have two questions for you. My first one is a question regarding the amount of cars on roads. I was curious if the applicant had done anything for employees to incentivize, you know, bicycling to work or carpooling with other employees?
Yeah. Through the Albany Development Code, there's already standards to require onsite bicycle parking, so.
I meant, has the applicant incentivized carpooling or cycling to work?
I'm not sure. I didn't ask that question.
And then I wanted to understand your, the applicant's reasoning for keeping the width 20 feet versus 24 feet. Is it a convenience? Is it a cost? I'd love to have more color stated into the record.
Yes. Thank you for that question. So the site is fully improved at this stage. So that all the infrastructure is already installed on those. When you start to look at how you'd modify that area, there's a course of cost to that. Other items of the site would start to be impacted anytime that you widen things. So this is a ripple effect. If you widen an accessway, then you're modifying the parking lot, the stall widths. And the parking lot and the site to the north of this accessway was developed to not further impact natural wetlands that exist in that area. So they're trying to keep it compact and not expand out into those other areas or reduce their onsite parking.
If there's an overabundance of parking spaces, though, maybe it would not impact the current usage?
Yeah. On this particular application, they didn't take a look at parking demands. That would have been with the previous approval. So I can't say if they built to the minimum or if there's excess that could be removed.
Thanks.
Counselors?
I have another question.
You go first and I'll go to you.
I would, I would like to ask the fire department, how the 20-foot driveway, is it adequate for fire access?
It was approved by the fire department during a building permit review process. So their standard process would, to route those four comments at the planning review stage and also through final building permits.
So I, thank you. I'm asking, I would like to ask about the people seeing delivery trucks, fuel trucks, going through that entranceway. Is that, aren't they supposed to be coming from Ferry? Commercial, we coming through Ferry, correct?
Yeah. I can tell you from my experience with construction, when a site is actually being improved, then they do open up those areas sometimes. Or sometimes people just don't get directed in the right way, depending on when gates are installed or when pieces of the site start to come together.
So when did it finish? Just recently?
I'm not sure of the specific date. I could say now that when they were alerted to that, they did block that gate. And I understood that that started to help alleviate any of those issues.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Laura. Does any staff member have, wish to respond to any testimony presented?
Yeah, there's a couple of points I wanted to address here.
Microphone?
Concerning the public notification, we followed the same procedures and how we noticed the neighborhood as we did in the 2017 case originally. So we did send notice out to property owners within 300 feet of the site on April 24th, 2023. And the property was also posted beginning May 1st. So anybody in the area or driving by could see that that property was posted and it had hearing information in that. My recollection of this project is that they did design the facility for future growth. I believe it was about 20 years worth of future growth in the district. And I think that's what explains why there's right now an excess of parking spaces onsite. That's all I had.
Thank you. Does any, does anyone have procedural questions they would like to raise at this time? If so, please raise your hand if you're attending in person. If you're attending virtually, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon. Or if you're attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name to be called upon. We have two? Please, you first?
Oh, I just had a question to what she was saying because I couldn't hear her very well.
Well, come up here. Please come up so we can all hear. Please.
I just had a question because I couldn't hear her very well.
Okay. So go ahead and ask your question. Use the microphone so we can get it recorded.
You did bring up a question, however, fire trucks turning in there. And because the way the street is, the fire truck would not be able to swing wide enough to pull into that back entrance. But my question was, what is wrong with the main entrance off Ferry Street? Because it is wide enough for both buses and cars.
Please get closer to the microphone.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. Please ask your question again.
Was, why not use the main entrance on Ferry Street? Because it is wide enough for both buses and cars.
So anyone like to respond to that? She's asking if it's wide enough for buses and cars? Correct? Yeah, so fire department, would you please address that? I saw you stand up earlier, so.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, it was constructed appropriately, the 20-foot width, as far as turning onto Lion, depending on the parking that's on Lion. It should be fine. As far as my recollection, it's not a required emergency access road, but it was installed. So it's, it's there for our use. And we can access it either way, from Ferry, driving through and going out to Lion, as well as vice versa. So it's constructed for our apparatus.
Okay, thank you. There was a second person that raised their hand.
May I ask the Chief Ratcliffe a question?
Please, go ahead.
Before she goes away? And forgive me, I don't know if it's chief or assistant chief. I just know you're Laura Ratcliffe. So my question is, you said, depending on the parking. And some of the folks brought up the fact that a lot of the employees are parking on the street. It sounds like that is potentially an issue even now.
And we experienced that throughout the city. We have kind of thinner streets and parking. So this is not unique to this site. I mean, it's kind of everywhere. So we, if there's parking along the, the road, that's going to kind of hinder us making a clean sweep in there, we can maneuver back and, back and forth. We can make it through. It's just not a clean sweep that we would like. But that's not unusual for older neighborhoods. We, we experienced that everywhere.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
You didn't answer your question. I'm sorry, Counselor.
You did. I think you did. I'm, I'm, my concerns are still not alleviated, but no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, you answered my question. Thank you.
So I hold steady for a second. Colleen, did you have a question or feedback?
Is the question?
Go ahead, Colleen.
Is the question presented to you or back to the applicant?
This is to rebuttal to the applicant, the last staff report.
Mayor?
Yeah.
We're on procedural questions now.
Oh, procedural questions.
So it would be.
Discussion's over.
It would be, yeah. So it would be a question most likely to the, to the council on a procedural.
So do you have a procedural question, Colleen?
I think, I think one, I think, I may be saying it wrong. But one of the questions I have is, are you aware that on 28th Avenue in our subdivision, that the sidewalks are not completed, which will drive children into the streets? Because they will not walk through the property itself. And also, are you aware that, did they not, did this, did they not anticipate the traffic going to Ferry Street before the application, before they sold the 3.3 acres that adjoined Marion Street? So they would have had a straight shot for employees?
That'd be a staff.
I, I don't know if you're aware about the property surrounding.
So.
The school. Bus station.
So do you have something, David?
I mean, these aren't procedural questions. But, but the answer to her question is, if they weren't, they are now. So I mean, every, she, she just, she just laid that out, that it's not there. Did you want to respond to it, David, or?
The curbs and gutters are not, the curbs, sidewalks are not completed on 28th Avenue.
Thank you. So do you want to respond, David, or?
And Mayor, the reason for the concern I have on this is because the more stuff, if we just, if this becomes a free-for-all, then we're going to have to have the applicant.
Come back up, correct.
We're going to have the whole thing going.
Stick to procedural from now on.
Yep, okay.
I suspect we're past that point. I think the earlier comment from Colleen probably was new information that you'd need to have the applicant opportunity to rebut.
Can you speak up a little bit?
Better? Yeah, so I think the earlier information from Colleen provided new information that the applicant hadn't heard before, had an opportunity to rebut. So you're probably, whatever I say, in a position where you're asking the applicant if they want to come up and speak to what they've heard.
So may I ask me, say the attorney, so we have to bring the applicant back up?
If she wants to come back up and rebut that, yes. And that's, that's the whole reason why we don't let, let people, yeah, deviate from it. So, but if, if she, Ms. LaRocque wants to come back up, but she's welcome to do so.
The comment about, given that that will occur, the comment about lack of sidewalk being completed on 28th may well be accurate. Sidewalk installation on local streets is often deferred to building permits. And so if all of the lots are not yet developed, there will be gaps in that sidewalk. And those gaps won't be filled in until each individual lot's been developed.
Thank you. Laura, would you like to have anything? No rebuttal, thank you. Now, we're going to stick to procedural. Does anyone have procedural questions they would like to raise at this time? If so, please raise your hand if you're attending in person. If you're attending virtually, please return on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon. If you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name to be called upon. Is it a procedural question? Come up, please. Three minutes, please. Do you have a question?
Yes. The question is, has, somebody asked, are there, are there other solutions? The question is, has, has the, the school district looked for?
That's not a procedural question, sir.
Has a school district looked at other?
That's not a procedural question.
Pardon me?
That is not a procedural question for this process. It's not a procedural question. I got it.
I guess to me, it is a procedural question.
You can speak during business from the public, which is coming up.
Because the.
For, for this, for this hearing, it is not a procedural question. You can come back during business from the public. Thank you. Does the council wish to discuss the case and questions of staff? Counselor Newton?
I was just, I pulled up an aerial street view of, of the 28th Avenue. And I didn't see that it wasn't developed at all. I just wanted to clarify that this is an accurate, you know.
It's not accurate?
No, but I wanted to clarify if it was accurate. There are, there is no sidewalks, but it's, it's the 28th Avenue behind Harvest Baptist Church. It looks like there's some, you know, I don't know.
The 2019.
So has it been developed with homes or? It's being developed currently? Okay, so sidewalks will be included probably in the development. Okay.
Thank you. So at this point, since there's no more questions of staff that have been raised, and I declare the public hearing closed at 7:28 PM. Does the city council wish to discuss this case? We've just finished that section. This is duplicate again. Do I have a motion to regarding the applicant's application? It suggests that motions are listed in the staff report. There's a motion, a motion here? Listened in staff report. We just had, we just, we just had two sessions of that. That's what I asked for, is any discussion?
I have a comment, and I don't know if this constitutes discussion or not. But I, I don't know why they can't use the Ferry Street access for everything. It's built for it. It's not disruptive. That seems like a reasonable, a reasonable course for me.
It sounds like convenience for me.
Yep.
I think it sounds a whole lot safer than, than having them, yeah. The street that's big enough and wide enough and commercial. I, I, the thought of little ones or elderly folks or anyone, you know, middle-aged, being mowed down or being injured. I, I just, I don't think, I don't think, I can't support that.
I'm a grandfather, so.
Pardon?
I'm a grandfather, so I have to err on the side of safety.
I also feel like, I think if it's already there, I think that GAPS should look at other alternatives and other solutions. That sounds like a them problem. And I think they need to probably be more resourceful in looking at another space. And I just think about the inconvenience of people backing out of their driveways. Coming from a big city, I've seen a lot of horrible accidents in spaces like that. And that is not what you want to see.
If I can add to my comments, I, I realize that this is offered as a secondary option for employees. But, and I don't know how many people are going to take a shortcut or that they're going to go all the way around to the main, main street. But I think that it, it, in my opinion, it should be adequately signed and communicated to staff that it is a secondary option. And it's an, I think for employees, it should be an exit only if they have to use it. I think she really should be maintained for emergency vehicles only. I'm thinking on, I'm making my mind up as I'm speaking, but that's, that's where I'm going. Emergency access only, employees come in on Ferry Street.
With signage, proper signage.
Proper signage.
Yes, lots of it.
So Counselor Newton and we're with Counselor Kobsinski.
So I just want to, you know, play the advocate here. So we also have pedestrians that are on Ferry. That's a rather busy road. I'm hearing, so I'm a parent with two kids. You know, I, I teach my children sidewalk safety and to walk on the sidewalk. I don't think that public roads should be considered, you know, someone's private driveway or private access roads. I do understand lessening traffic on some of the main artery veins, you know, especially as we're growing as a population. I do like Counselor Smith's, Smith's suggestion of making it potentially exit-only route to leave. But, yeah, there, that's kind of my just stream of consciousness there.
Thank you, Counselor Kobsinski.
I guess my concern is if it's, I'm inferring from the comments that we're getting that it's already being abused by people. And even if we deny this, how is it going to be enforced so that employees do not use it? There's not going to be a, an officer down there or somebody with a stop sign or something like that. So that's going to be an enforcement issue from the company or from GAPS and, and/or from the city. But at this point, I'm not generally in favor of having the option granted.
Counsel, anything else? So. I do, I do believe that the ferry was designed for commercial traffic, the heavy traffic flow. Reducing traffic in residential areas is important because children do not pay attention. People walk down the street like this. And adding more vehicles and more traffic, I'd prefer, my own brothers would be, to have that gate closed and only used for emergency exit and access. That's me.
And I think GAPS could probably, it should be, as Counselor McGee mentioned, sort of GAPS is, they can deal with it. They should find a way. Find a way to police it. Find a way to make sure that the other streets or that one thing is used as emergency exit only. That should be on them. Whether they have to, as one of the women suggested, buy back some of the property they sold. Figure out a way. They can do it. Yes, we do.
So do I hear a motion regarding this application? Suggests that motions are listed in your council, your staff report?
Well, I move we do not adopt the ordinance. And the guidance that I would suggest would be to have GAPS take a look at the property development and realign the access ingress or whatever for their employees.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Did you catch that motion, Allison? Thank you. Read of the council, okay. The decision of the city council may be appealed to the land use. We have to vote. Have motion and a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. The decision by the city council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals by filing a notice to, of intent to appeal no later than 21 days after the decision becomes final. Within five working days following the adoption of the amendment, new, excuse me, new land use regulation director shall forward to the Department of Land Conservation and Development a copy of the adopted amendments and findings, not notify the Department of any substantial changes which may have occurred and proposed, proposal since the previous notification for the department. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, members of the gallery for speaking today. The next is a, another public hearing for a, next on tonight's agenda is a legislative public hearing regarding, I'll wait till everybody clears out. Take a bio break, anybody?
Bio break?
Yeah. So we're going to recess for a five, 10-minute bio break. So I'll see you back. Here's that countdown clock. Thank you. We're back in session at 7:45 PM. Back in session at 7:45 PM. Back in session at 7:45 PM. Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is a legislative public hearing regarding amendments to the Albany Comprehensive Plan to adopt the Housing Implementation Plan and to update the housing policies as described in the planning file CP dash 03 dash 23. The applicant is the City of Albany Committee Development Department. I call to order this legislative public hearing at time 7:45. If you wish to testify, there are two options available, which were described on the council's agenda and in the notice materials. At this time, I'll call upon the reading of the meeting procedures by the Conference of Planning Manager, Anne Catlin.
Thank you, councillor and councillor and mayor. For those of you wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the approval standards and review criteria in the Conference of Plan and Development Code that you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond.
At this time, I call for staff report from project planner Anne Catlin.
Thank you. And I want to introduce our project team, the consultants from MIG APG. We have Matt Hasty. A lot of you have seen Matt's face in, you know, virtually, but it's really nice to have them here in person. And Kate Rogers. And they have worked on several projects all the way back to the housing needs analysis and have been doing a lot of good work for us. So I'm glad to have them here and we're going to tag team the presentation. So why are we doing this? Well, we did adopt a housing needs analysis back in 2020. And as you know, we do have housing issues in Oregon as well as in Albany. There are quite a few housing needs, especially for low income households and renters. Many are housing cost burden. And there are certain housing types that we don't have enough of in our communities, such as small, single story houses, housing for people with mobility issues and seniors and first time home buyers, among others. So after the housing needs analysis, we thought, well, while we have momentum and we worked on the middle housing project, we thought, we know there are other tools in our toolbox that we can look at to address some of our housing needs and get more diversity in housing types. So this is related to statewide planning goal 10, which is housing. So we really just wanted to identify more things we can do to create housing opportunities for everyone in the community. We've been working on this for about a year and a half. And you may remember, some of you may not. For those that weren't on the council, you did appoint a Housing Affordability Task Force, and they met five times over the last year. And they really were instrumental in reviewing a lot of work and providing detailed input. But we also did do a lot of committee outreach with seven focus group meetings with a lot of different participants. And that information is in the appendices and a community survey. And we thought we got a lot of input to narrow down the strategies to those that we thought would do well in the city. And we've got them in different categories. And I'm going to have Matt Hasty walk through the different categories. But we're really going to focus on the priority strategies that we would like your blessing on tonight so that we can begin working on implementing these. And with that, I will just go to the next slide.
All right.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Anne. All right, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Close enough. Excellent. Great to see you all. And it's nice to be here in three dimensions. And, you know, I have to see the flat screen version of me tonight. So thank you for having me and Kate. So yeah, we're going to focus most of the rest of this presentation, which is pretty brief, on some priority strategies for initial implementation. There are quite a few strategies in the Housing Implementation Plan. And these aren't the only important ones, but these are strategies that staff feels can be implemented or get started on implementing these in the short term without having additional revenue sources available to do that. So these are some of the low hanging fruit. Again, a lot of other strategies in the plan are also important, but were identified as, I will say, relatively lower priorities, or they rely on additional funding sources that have not yet been developed or secured, or they require some additional evaluation. So we're kind of focused a little bit tonight on some of those shorter term strategies. And so again, there's sort of four categories or types of strategies here. Some of the ones related to land use and zoning, so updating the city's zoning map or development code that we're focusing on are, one, encouraging smaller detached dwelling units. Anne mentioned kind of a lack of some of those smaller units, which can be purchased at a lower price, need less land. So looking at the development code to reduce lot sizes to allow for those types of units to be produced more easily. Removing barriers to the development of multiple dwellings, that type of housing, and particularly looking at the minimum lot size for that type of housing and making sure that other standards will also sort of govern how many units you can get on a lot and focus on those rather than that minimum area required per unit. Increasing flexibility for accessory dwelling units just in terms of looking at the current limitations on size and configuration of those and providing some more flexibility to improve the ability to build those. Looking at some incentives related to building height and density, particularly for housing for low income households. That's one thing that can be done to reduce the cost and improve the financial feasibility of those types of households. Allowing for single room occupancy or micro housing. So that's housing in particularly small units and that sometimes have shared kitchen or bathroom or other common facilities. So making sure the city's code defines those and has standards that will regulate how they're developed. So that's another strategy. And then there's certainly a need kind of in Albany and around the state for more housing that's accessible to people who have mobility limitations or physical or other disabilities. So making sure there's some additional attention to those, either just by providing information to developers about best practices associated with those, or again, looking at some incentives to allow for development of those related to height or density bonuses or potentially financial incentives as well. There are some strategies, other strategies related to incentive, incentives and policies. So there are a variety of kind of tax abatement tools that are authorized by the state. There's a couple of tools that are kind of well suited to some of the types of housing that have been identified as priorities, the low income rental housing abatement and the transit supportive multi-unit development abatement, sometimes called the MPT. So these are abatements that can meet kind of multiple housing goals. And these are abatements the city would like to, you know, be looking into sooner rather than later. Systems development charges have an impact on the cost of housing. The city's already updated its system development charge methodology to tie it to the size of housing, which is awesome. And you're one of the, I would say, sort of a groundbreaking city on doing that. So that's great. There's a couple of other things you can do, though. One would be just to defer collection of SDCs until certificate of occupancy that would apply to all housing. And it would reduce, it's not a huge reduction, but it is a reduction in cost for developers in terms of when they pay those fees. And then if the city develops an additional revenue source to reduce or exempt SDCs for housing that meets certain affordable housing criteria. And then finally, adopting a policy related to using surplus city owned land for affordable housing, something you can do now. But putting together kind of a consistent coherent policy on that is suggested as an early action on that one. One of the funding sources that's identified in the Housing Implementation Plan is a construction excise tax. This is something that really will need some more discussion and evaluation. So initiating that process to further evaluate this is one of the recommended priority strategies there. And then finally, there's a number of strategies in the plan related to partnerships with other organizations that develop and build housing, particularly housing that's affordable to folks with low and moderate incomes. So one of the strategy, priority strategies there is to support a community land trust that can help build housing that facilitates affordable homeownership options. Also, again, kind of a priority in the, in the plan. So there's a variety of ways you can do that. One, it relates to one of the earlier strategies, and that's donating city owned land. You can provide grants or low interest loans to these organizations, down payment assistance to the folks who are moving into the housing and/or direct funding to a community land trust. That would be, again, contingent on adoption of a new revenue source. But some of the other things are things you could do sooner, so.
Yep. So I just wanted to make you aware of some of the review criteria related to this decision. We do need to ensure that these amendments are, support our existing policies, but, and also consistent with the statewide planning goals. And the specific one here is the housing goal, goal 10. Obviously, this work will further support goal 10, and it will help us better address specialized needs within our community. And also, it is responding to changing conditions within the community. Legislative amendments need to be consistent with the goals and policies of the Conference of Plan, the statewide planning goals and relevant area plans. And I just covered some of those in the last slide. And then that they need to meet changing conditions. And we feel that the proposed amendments do meet all those review criteria. And we would like to answer any questions at this time.
So does any council have any clarifying questions regarding the staff report? Counselor Newton?
I have a few questions, just because I was, I was just wondering about the language. So I'm looking at on my packet, I apologize, it's page 143, Attachment Exhibit A8. And I was looking at number eight, encourage the development of great neighborhoods by supporting neighborhood identity, locating parks, trails, schools, daycare, churches, enclosed proximity, incorporate natural features, connecting and orienting new neighborhoods to village centers. I'm just curious, why are we using encourage instead of require? I think it'd be great to, you know, require that we're also including green spaces or trails, especially when we're wanting to get a little denser.
Yep. So you're, you're referring to some existing policies. And we could certainly revisit those. And actually, we are planning to do a refresh of the Conference of Plan and try to make it a more strategic and user friendly document so we can take those into consideration. But yeah, so are we encouraging the Conference of Plan policies? We could be more specific if that's the direction you want to go.
I'd love that. And I'd love to, you know, be a fly on the wall and listen, listen in whenever you guys are doing that as well.
Are there any other communities doing that? Changing the language to require versus encourage?
Well, I mean, I haven't looked at other Conference of Plans, but we, when we use these, the way we use these policies is essentially for land use applications that relate to zone changes or Conference of Plan map amendments. But as I mentioned, we're trying to make the Conference of Plan more strategic so that it actually might become a work program for the city. And I think when we do that, we might look at it a little bit differently. And, and I can look at what other communities are doing. Sorry, I couldn't hear your question very well. I'm having a hard time hearing, but it could be me.
No, it could be me. I might have been like the, super close to my microphone. I apologize. And then I, this, I was just really curious. I, this is a conversation I was actually having with my neighbor yesterday. We were walking there, looking at buying a house. They're currently renters in my neighborhood. And we were wondering, what is it going to be like when our kids are trying to buy homes? Like, we're just, we're thinking it's going to be just, you know, unattainable. I was curious, this is tangentially related, about working with the housing authority for any, you know, section eight housing. I know that we have quite a waitlist. And I was just curious how this plan also worked in tandem with theirs.
Yeah, so obviously, the housing authority plays a critical role within the city. And we are all partners together. They get their funding from HUD for those vouchers. And they do provide, it's more than 900 or so housing vouchers to local residents and serving thousands of households over time. But as far as, we certainly support their work, whether it's additional development, if they are able to get more funding for vouchers. But, you know, the city doesn't have a source of funding to further support adding more vouchers. One of the issues we have in the community is that vouchers are underutilized because they can't find housing that actually is affordable enough where their voucher can be used, because there's a limit on the amount of rent that can be paid. It's a little more complicating. We could talk offline about it. But what we're really hoping some of these actions will do is that we remove any barriers to creating the kinds of housing that we hear are desired and may actually be affordable, whether it's for renters or for homeowners in the future.
Awesome, thanks.
A question.
Good, Counselor.
How are you determining what's affordable? Are you using specific metrics or the trends that's happening in the market?
Yeah, thank you for that question. That's really good, Counselor McGee. So affordable, housing that is affordable could be anyone at any income level. The standard metric is that you don't pay more than 30% of your income on housing costs. Now, that's not just rent and your mortgage, but that's your utilities as well. So, but when we're really thinking about affordable housing, which is different than housing affordability, we're looking at households in our community that make 80% of the area median income based on household size. I don't know if that answered your question, but.
Yeah, it does. Because as a renter here, like, I think I've seen the rent skyrocket from what it was when I moved here five years ago. And they don't, I was misled. I thought like water and sewer and garbage was kind of included. It wasn't. So that's a separate bill that you get. So that's what I was wondering when you, you know, you talked about what's like, what's affordable for them.
Yep. And so I mentioned those housing vouchers. The utilization rate is challenging because the house, the household gets a voucher from the Limbent Housing Authority. And the voucher pays the difference of what their 30% of the income can pay. But there's still a limit that HUD sets. And they look at our rents, at the market rate rents every year and adjust those. But they're also looking at where are the average utility costs and things like that so that the renter that is getting that voucher is truly hopefully only paying 30% of their income towards those costs in addition to rent.
Right. And also, thank you for that. And also, is there some sort of, I guess, I don't know, like requirement? Like you said, they have to make a certain amount of money? Like someone who, myself, for example, they would deny me if I needed that help to get my water, sewer and garbage because of my income, right? And so you have a lot of people in that situation. I mean, you almost got to have your stuff about to get disconnected in order for them to act. So, I mean, does this plan, would kind of address that in that way?
Well, what I was going to say, Counselor McGee, is that I think what'd be helpful is having maybe either a work session or inviting the Limbent Housing Authority here to talk about their program. It's a little bit different, but we certainly want to continue to support these agencies. They're doing critical work in our community. But what we're trying to do with these policies and the action plan is really remove any barriers to the type of housing that's needed. So whether it's development of more housing that Limbent Housing Authority builds, whether it's Habitat, whether it's a market rate builder. You know, we've heard, for example, that market rate builders won't build smaller houses because lot sizes are too big and they won't make, you know, they won't make a profit. So for, we're just trying to remove barriers so we get more variety of housing types and then maybe more variety of prices so that it might serve more people.
I'm sorry, I got another question. You know, as a renter, I need to know this moving forward. Is there any talks of like, sort of like rent control? I've heard people ask about that, constituents ask about that and stand it, especially folks who are elderly and people who are low income.
We did not talk about rent control through this process. That's something the council could talk about. I think only Portland, I don't know if any cities in Oregon do that. I don't know if you know Matt. But the state legislature has taken a few measures to address, you know, eviction issues with renters. But I, you know, rent control, whether it be a state issue or whether a city would do that. But I, you know, rent control, whether it'd be a state issue or whether a city would do that, I don't know of any cities, maybe Portland.
I haven't, I haven't heard anything.
Yeah, I mean, there are state requirements associated with ability to increase rents. And so those apply here as well as throughout the state. There are very few cities that have their own rent control ordinances in addition to what the state is already requiring. Portland might be one of them, Milwaukee, Oregon had an ordinance in place, but I think it preceded the state ordinance. And so I don't know that they've, you know, done anything beyond what the state now requires. And, yeah.
Yeah, just, excuse me, my recollection as well is that the state actually limits local ability to establish new rent, like true rent control when we think about actually capping how much rent can increase. I believe there are limitations from the state on what local governments can do in that regard.
Thank you.
And I'll just say that this is a starting point. There's a lot of opportunities to explore more tools and consider, you know, lobbying the state for, for needs within the community. But this is just a way to get started on trying to address housing needs. So I appreciate you bringing up some different issues that we maybe haven't discussed locally.
Thank, and thank you. I think part of that, too, is just like, even with student housing, I hear students don't have places to stay, they can't afford it. They're living with people who they do not know, you know, they're renting out their room. I mean, it can be, it becomes dangerous, it becomes inconvenient, it's not safe, et cetera. So that's why I was just wondering, you know, because I have students who sometimes are living in their car because they just cannot afford to pay rent in this city. So, but thank you for what you're doing, I'd be really happy to hear more about this, and yeah.
Any other counsel, any questions? Thank you very much. We will now be taking public testimony. If anyone wishes to enter an exhibit into the record as part of the, your testimony, please briefly describe it, and then present it to the city clerk. I will call, I will call on those who registered to speak. And where is that list? Yours right here? Registered to speak, refer to the public hearing sign-up sheet, and I do have Robin Davis. Please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Robin Davis, I am the chairman of the, the Community Development Commission. And I'd like to add into record our letter of support of this housing implementation plan. On behalf of the, sure. On behalf of the Community Development Commission, I'd like to express support for the housing implementation plan. Throughout the development of the CDBG consolidation plan, the need for more housing was a recurring theme. Specifically, there is a need for more affordable housing units, accessible housing, supportive and transitional housing, and single-bedroom units. Within the consolidated plan, the Community Development Commission identified this need as a key priority. Thus, the Community Development Commission has taken an interest in the housing implementation plan and sees the value of the strategies outlined in the plan to pave the way for more housing to be developed in Albany. Given the significant need for affordable housing and financial barriers to producing affordable housing, the Community Development Commission is also acknowledges the need for additional funding to support affordable housing creation in Albany. As such, the Community Development Commission strongly endorses the pursuit of the strategies outlined in Category 3 of the plan to establish a funding support source to support future affordable housing development. The Community Development Commission recognizes that the current available funding to support affordable housing and other needed housing types throughout the community development through, excuse me, the Community Development Block Grant is limited both in the amount and by the restrictions on how funding can be used. The CDC believes another funding source is a vital component of meeting the housing needs of Albany residents now and in the future. In summary, the CDC is pleased with the efforts the city is taking to encourage more housing production and address barriers to needed housing in Albany through the housing implementation plan. The CDC concurs the need for more housing and believes adopting and implementing the plan will advance this goal. With this in mind, the CDC encourages the Albany City Council to adopt the housing implementation plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Robin. So, we'll now be taking people that did not sign up to speak, registered to speak. Do you have a comment or would you like to make a statement? Thank you. Does any member of this audience wish to speak about the proposed amendments? Please raise your hand if you are attending in person or virtually to be called upon, or if you're attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name to be called upon. Please provide your name and your address on the sign-ups, in the sign-up sheet in person, or email it to the city clerk. Anyone have their hand up? I don't see a hand. Does anyone on the screen? There's no one on screen. Does any staff member wish to respond to the testimony presented? Does a counselor have any questions for staff? I declare the public hearing closed at 8:10 PM. So council, we need to discuss the amendments.
It was a beautiful report. That was great.
Well done. Are we done deliberating? It sounds like we, oh, Counselor Kupczynski?
Your mic is off.
Will the city attorney read the ordinance in title only?
Yes. An ordinance amending ordinance number 4836, which adopted the City of Albany Comprehensive Plan by amending the Albany Comprehensive Plan and adopting findings.
We have a motion and.
Move to read the ordinance a second time in title only.
Second. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Great.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 4836, which adopted the City of Albany Comprehensive Plan by amending the Albany Comprehensive Plan and adopting findings.
Would a counselor like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I move we adopt the ordinance. Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no. A legislative decision of the city council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals by filing a notice of intent to appeal, no later than 21 days after the decision becomes final. Within five working days of the following adoption of the amendment or a new land use regulation, the director shall forward the department of, forward to the Department of Land Conservation and Development a copy of the adopted text and findings and notify the Department of any substantial changes that will, may have occurred in the proposal since the previous notification in the department. There's two more public hearings? I didn't get the memo. Okay, here we go. What's the next one? Okay, all right. So next on tonight's agenda is a public hearing on the annual inflationary increase in system development charges and public work fees. Directions on how to testify and submit written materials were published in the council agenda. I declare the public hearing open at 8:13 PM. Does the staff have a report?
I have a very brief report, Mayor Johnson.
Thank you.
We discussed the inflationary increases for the system development charges and the connection charges for public work fees at a work session on the 22nd. So we, we covered the details. I, I think that was a complete, a complete summary. So the only other thing that I have to add, just for the record, in case those are in the audience who would like to, to speak to this. The inflationary increase we are considering tonight is a 3.71% inflationary increase and planning on adopting or enacting the fourth step increase for our water and wastewater system development charges. The fourth out of five, five steps. And also want to just follow up. During the work session, council had asked to see various home sizes and what the SDC charges would be for those various home sizes. That is included in the council memo on page 299. There's a list of various home sizes, and then what the system development charges would be for those homes. Those, those costs in there reflect the, the proposed increase tonight, so. With that, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Now please stay there. No one submitted written materials, no one registered to speak virtually. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this matter? See no hands? I declare the public hearing. Oh, Mr. Cordier, you speak on this one? Please come up.
Yes.
Three minutes, please.
Tom Cordier, North Albany. How many of the eight revisions are cost reductions?
They're inflationary increases.
Pardon me?
They're inflationary increases.
I, I'm not.
They are inflationary increases.
Yeah, so they're all increases, all eight of them, right?
Staff? Correct.
Yeah. So in, in my last interchange with the city manager, he suggested to me that putting sticky notes on a big flip chart was no way to develop a budget. And, but it is a technique to get ideas from employees on how to reduce costs. And apparently, the, the term do more with less isn't in the city's lexicon, and that's disheartening to me. I'm a, worked my entire career for a for-profit business, and that's what you do, is you find ways to cut your costs. And it doesn't mean that it automatically, that you have to give up services. Does not mean that. So when people say to me, well, just tell me what else you don't want me to do, that's a bogus argument. And so I'm not pleased with these kinds of inflationary increases. I think it's unjustified, and what it says is nobody who works for the city gives a damn about decreasing costs. And that's disappointing to me for a government who's supposed to represent the people, and the people are in despair regarding inflationary costs. That they, that they, and they can only control what, how they purchase dog food or cereal. That's all they can do, is operate on their own household budget. And for the government to constantly increase costs without a process to, that even looks at decreasing costs, is wrong.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak? I declare the public hearing closed at 8:18 PM. Counsel discussion?
And Mayor, there's several resolutions, they all can be voted on at once.
Okay.
I have a question, though, I want to make sure I'm clear if we lump them all together, because it does say annual inflationary increase for system development charges and public works fees. The public works fees, I just want to make sure I know what I'm voting on. The wastewater charges that go up inflationarily, stormwater, all these, those three things. Because I, I hear Mr. Cordier, I live in that world, too, where I'm having to cut other things. I can't cut the fact that my water bill is going up, and my, all the other bills are going up. And I do think that, that he, he makes a really good point. I, I'm sure staff isn't looking for ways to stick it to people, but I mean, is there some, I mean, it, it seems to me like, I just, I take issue with, with, with automatically raising the costs of things that people need to survive, like their water, like their sewer. And, and that we do this routinely without a thought. Oh, yes, automatically, inflationary. Well, my gas has gone up a lot inflationarily. I filled my car today, my groceries, my, what it costs to make the food in my restaurant has gone through the roof. If there was a way to not automatically raise those charges, because I don't really want to vote, I, I'm not in agreement with automatically raising the public works fees, with all due respect for everybody who works in public works.
Mr. Mayor, please, I think there might be a misunderstanding, Counselor Novak. In fact, the surest way to ensure that your fees go up is to not approve these fees. These are not your fees, these are systems development charges and connection charges.
That's what I, that was my question.
So if you do not, if the city does not collect systems development charges for a wastewater system, then the rate payers pay it.
Right, I understand that.
Under this system, this is the way the developers pay it. This is the way, you know, the, the phrase is making growth pay for itself, rather than placing that burden on rate payers.
Thank you, yes. That's why I was asking about public works fees, which is addressed here. So this is all SDCs and not referring to.
The rates.
Thank you, thank you. I just, I needed clarification there, so I really appreciate that.
And we're revenue neutral as well, that means we're not making money, we're not losing money. We're just paying the bills so people can build their homes. Which is good.
Thank you.
Any other counsel discussion, Marilyn? Counselor Smith, you have anything?
Yeah, I do. I just wanted to remind people of the lengthy, more than a year, possibly two years, of cost-cutting discussions that the council had during our last recessionary adjustments, when revenues were down because of the recession and our costs were continuing to go up. We had, I don't know how many meetings, with charts and graphs and tables of suggestions from the city staff about what we could cut back, what we could change, what we could do differently, what we could possibly charge more for to make it pay for itself. There were very practical items that the council adopted. There were things that were, would never have been possible, but it was, it was worth the discussion. Many changes were made. The staff, the city staff at all levels looks at ways to control costs. Every day they're on the job. And I, I am offended by people who continually say we don't ever consider that, neither the council nor the staff. That's not fair, and it's not true. So, thank you, that has nothing to do with SDCs. These fees that we're considering this evening are directly, directly related to the cost of developing property. They are paid by the people who, who do those developments. They are not paid by anybody else. They, the cost may get passed on to people who purchase property, who do business at those businesses after they're developed, but they are development-related and not daily bills that come in the mail for people who are turning on the water and flushing the toilet.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. There are eight resolutions beginning on page 304 of your agenda. We can lump them all together because we've already, we've all seen these in the work session. So would a counselor like to make a motion?
I'll move that we approve all eight resolutions or, within the annual inflationary increase for system development charges and public work, works fees.
We have a motion?
Second, times eight.
Times eight, motion and a second, times eight. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes, thank you very much, council. Next on tonight's agenda is a public hearing on fire, and, do we move that one? Do we keep that one there? That's still in there? Okay, that's, that's still there, yes. Okay, next on tonight's agenda is a public hearing on fire and safety, service, the safety services fees on. and safety service, the safety services fees on schedule schedule update, directions on how to testify and submit written materials or publish it on the council agenda. I declare the public hearing open at 8:24 PM.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors and staff. Laura Ratcliffe, Albany Fire. I spoke to these items on Monday evening and do not have anything further to add. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
So thank you for your report. No one submitted written material? Let me double check this list. I got a bunch of them. Okay, there's right there. No one submitted materials? No one registered to speak virtually? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak regarding this topic? Thank you. I declare the public hearing closed at 8:25 PM. Counsel discussion? Any questions for? No questions? So there's a resolution on page 332 of your agenda packet. Would the council like to make a motion?
I move to approve the resolution on page 332.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Business from the public. Written testimony was received from. How many do we have? Okay, these people signed up tonight, thank you. We was the the emails that came in were sent to the council, right? All the emails were? Okay, thank you. I don't have a list, so who sent them in. There's a lot that came to the council. I have three people that four people that signed up to speak to business from the council. Dick Clark. He's a resident of Albany. Is Dick Clark here? There, hey, Dick, how's it going? It's been a few minutes.
My name is Dick Clark. I'm a resident of Albany since 1986.
You say 1896? Yeah, three minutes, sir.
Yeah. My concern right now for the city council is traffic and safety on and speeding on Second Avenue Southeast. Right now.
I'm just pointing my head where's that?
Right now, on on May 26, there was an accident on Second Avenue and Madison. It's right past the overpass where the railroad tracks go over the road. And somebody hit a car going supposedly 25 miles an hour and broadsided the car crossing Madison and flipped that car on the side. A week later, there was another accident right there on the same corner. And both cars had to be towed away. I've seen many accidents on that corner. And I've seen a lot of speeders going down that street, coming over the overpass at excessive speeds. And we've had police sitting in the corner on Madison Street and constantly working to pull over people that are speeding down that street. They're come. They're in the left-hand lane. And most of them are familiar with that area, know that they have to get over into the right-hand lane to make a turn on Main Street to go around the traffic circle and continue towards the freeway. A lot of traffic goes going through that area. And something needs to be done before somebody gets killed in that area. Actually, there was somebody that was killed on that accident or on that area going over the overpass too fast several years back. Something needs to be done before there is more fatalities in that area. On the way over here, we pulled out of our driveway. And at the same time, I noticed a car speeding in the left-hand lane, trying to get past every other car. And there was a boy standing there on a scooter. This was just today, just tonight, coming to this meeting. And something has to be done. They've improved the traffic flow. So since people are coming from Corvallis or wherever, they're headed towards the freeway. That flow is nonstop all the way to Albany Street over by Winko and Waverly Street.
Thank you, Dick. So could you do me a favor? Could you send? Did you already send the email in to city clerk? You did? Because I haven't seen it yet. Okay, I did see it then. So thank you for that, I appreciate it. I'm sure the police the police department's gonna be looking at that.
Thank you.
Captain Lyles, you here still? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I appreciate that, Captain. Next is Deputy Director of the ADA, Lisa Grotto.
Good evening. Lisa Grotto with the Albany Downtown Association with a very quick downtown update. I just wanted to make sure, if you hadn't heard, that the Albany Downtown Association was awarded double Main Street grants totaling $400,000. Last year, you may recall that we brought home a $200,000 grant for the Oregon Electric Railway Project, which that building is underway. That's the old Sadiqi's and future Ciberus. This year, we are partnering with Greyhound Tavern and also the Briggs Building, which currently houses Brick Circuit. So we are saving buildings and bringing prosperity downtown. That grant can only be applied for by a Main Street. Also, wanted to thank the City of Albany, No Dinks, and also Bouchards and Sons for getting the brand-new gorgeous banners up on First Avenue. You can read more about that in our newsletter. And Father's Day is coming up. There's some tips in our newsletter for that. And I think other than that, our summer passport program, that's a partnership with the Visitors Association, kicks off on June 24. We're excited to welcome visitors by the thousands to the annual Pride event on June 24 and the same day. And Moon Glow is opening at Albany Civic Theater. And one final note. The because of the construction at Montithew Park, we won't be able to show our movies there this year. But rather than going out of downtown, we are going back to our roots and will be showing it on the side of the Eagles Building. And in the parking lot like we were our first 11 years. There is a opportunity for the public to weigh in on what one movie we will show on August 11. So they can give us ideas right now until the 15th, so tomorrow. And then after that, we'll put a few up for a vote. So we hope you will join us on a nostalgic evening watching whatever the public wants.
Thank you so much.
And I've got 46 minutes.
Thank you. So, Mr. Cordier, you signed up to talk about item 13B. On the revised agenda, there's no 13B.
Mr. Mayor, that if you'll note, the 13B has been moved to 12C3, which is on your consent.
Consent calendar, okay, thank you. So do you still want to address? It's been moved. Well, it has been moved. It's not on the revised agenda that we received today is not there.
Well, it also it also appears, you know, it appears twice. That's a that's a Scrivener's error of ours. So it appears on 12C3 and and 13B, but it's it doesn't make a difference. If you'd like to speak, you have the.
Yeah, you have the floor, you can speak.
Tom Cordier, North Albany. The and maybe this was corrected too, I don't know. Because on the the 12th of June, there was a 6-0 vote to change some words in the resolution. But what was online today, those words hadn't been changed, so.
I don't know. They have been changed and they've been distributed to the councilors. And the change is exactly as they were directed on Monday night.
On on the 12th? Yeah, okay, good. I have a I I don't know what the the sidewalk art outside is is what kind? What bucket is that in?
What do you mean?
Well, there's sidewalk art out here about the Pride flag. And so I'd like to know what category that art is in, since it's not a flag.
It would be.
It's on the.
I'm not a constitutional attorney. I would say freedom of speech, freedom of expression.
Okay, so so if.
I might have tried it right there, so.
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
I'm directing the.
Go ahead, go ahead and ask your question. Go ahead.
So the the city grounds here are up for display of 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 sidewalk art.
It's public property?
Question mark.
It's a sure, it's public property. It's public property.
Well, not all, I mean, to answer to, no, not all public property can just like you can't graffiti something or paint paint the sidewalks and things like that. So it's that that would be a council decision. Actually, I would say that if if the sidewalks were going to be a public forum for people to display sidewalk chalk art. Because I I think I know where we're going with here. So, yeah, that would be something that the council would would if 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 it became an issue, the council, I mean, if it's not an issue, it's not an issue. But if it became an issue, then the council could make a decision whether it was open for everyone to to display whatever they wanted on the sidewalk.
So is would what's the process? I mean, we talk about.
So I have a point of order, Sean. I I believe business from the public is supposed to just be a testimony.
It's not a back and forth, correct.
Or from the public and not a back and forth debate with the public. So if we could stick to a testimony, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Becky. So the council discussed it at a work session. And you can come back and talk with us then.
Can it? I mean, this, I'll say, as of right now, if you want to go draw something on the sidewalk, you're welcome to do it. That's if, you know, if you want to draw a
The council has.
Cat or dog or whatever, yeah, I mean, you can you can go do it. You don't have to get permission from the council or or the any staff, so.
Okay. There's a word in here in this resolution that talks about a political party. And I think I know what that means.
Thank you, your time is up, Tom. Thank you very much.
But but there's a thing called a political action committee. Is that a political party?
If we may, if we need to modify, we will. But your time is up, sir. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mike Garcia is next up to speak with us. Is is Mike Garcia in the room? Thank you, Mike.
First of all, thank you for this opportunity. Last week, Steph Newton came to my home because I had a question. And that was, I live on 25th and Liberty, which is about a block and a half from Liberty Grade School. The last several years, my wife and I've had problems during the school time getting out of our driveway because we have on one side of our driveway is a very short area. And I sent some pictures of it. And we get cars that pull up there and they block the corner of 25th Street and then also block our driveway, especially the big SUVs. Even if people even drive up on the sidewalk and park their car there because it's a disabled ramp. The other issue we've had is we have our mailbox just further down that I share with my neighbor on a post. And we have people pick up their kids that will block the mailboxes. So if the post office shows up. And last week, after Steph came to my home, a female postal worker was delivering the mail and somebody yelled at her to get her truck out of the way. While she was trying to step out of her rig to put the mail in our boxes. So what I was requesting is possible getting yellow markers five feet on each side of the postal box and then having that corner painted yellow where people can't park there. The other problem on 25th is if people try to pull out, you've almost got to pull out completely into the street before you can either turn left or right and take a risk of getting T-boned because you can't see if there's somebody parked there.
Not supposed to be back and forth.
He said he sent something over to Allison, though.
Okay, do you have something for Allison or city?
I sent her some pictures.
Yeah, okay. Can you make sure we get those pictures?
I certainly will.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, please.
That's basically about it. So request from the city council, do they get that taken care of, if I could, please?
We'll take on, we'll definitely take that under advisement. Safety is really important, so.
All right, well, thank you so much for your time. And thank you, Steph, for coming to my home.
Thank you for having come. I think that's it. Business from the public. Is there anyone attending virtually that did not sign up to speak, would like to speak? Thank you. Anyone in the audience that did not sign up to speak, would like to speak? Thank you. Second reading of an ordinance, item 7, climate-friendly and equitable communities parking reform, CP 2 dash 20, 02 dash 23 and DC dash 02 dash 23. City Attorney reads the ordinance for the second time and title only, please.
Okay, an ordinance, amending ordinance number 4836, which adopted the City of Albany Comprehensive Plan and amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany Development Code by amending the Albany Comprehensive Plan and Development Code and adopting findings and declaring an emergency.
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Motion passes five to one. Thank you. Adoption of the kids, oh, excuse me, adoption of resolutions. Item A, alternate alternative to installation of emergency responder communications coverage system ERCCS. Resolution is on page 412. Counsel?
I move to adopt the resolution on page 412.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item B was pulled from the agenda. First reading of an ordinance, Albany Municipal Code Update Title 17.28, Uniform Fire Code Update. Will the city attorney read it in title only?
Yes, an ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code Chapter 17.28 Uniform Fire Code.
Move to read the ordinance a second time and title only.
Both on the same time.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would you please, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes.
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code Chapter 17.28 Uniform Fire Code.
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Second. I have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you, motion pass, ordinance passes. Number 10, award of contracts. Laboratory Analytical Services for City Industrial Compliance. Page 420 of your packet.
Can we group all these together?
You'd like to group them all, can we group them all together?
They're all different topics.
They're all different topics, yeah.
All right.
So, counsel? Page 420?
I move we adopt the resolution on page 420.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Public Works Integrator of Record. Message on chapter, excuse me, page 422 of the packet.
Move to adopt the resolution on page 422. Second.
Motion, thank you. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Item C, sole source procurement of historic preservation services for a historic Montithew House. Motion on page 425.
Move to adopt the ordinance or the resolution on page 425.
Excuse me, resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Question? Was pipe bursting pulled? Was this highlighted?
No, pipe bursting was added.
Was added, okay, thank you.
If it was pulled, you'd see a strike through it like you see on 8B.
So so item ESS dash 23 dash 01.
We still have one more.
Oh, sole source. Oh, I didn't see that one thing. Sole source procurement of Main Street program services from Albany Downtown Association. Oh, I didn't see that, I'm thinking, sole source procurement of Main Street program services from Albany Downtown Association.
Move to adopt the resolution on page four two eight.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, I just saw source, source, mark, kept going. So item E is SS dash two three dash zero one dash A, two hundred, twenty twenty-three pipe bursting projects, supplemental agenda on page two, have a motion.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Number eleven, enter governmental agreements for offset only collection services from municipal court. Resolution is on page four thirty-one.
Move to adopt the, the resolution on page four thirty-one.
Second.
All those in, a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Next on tonight's agenda is adoption of the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before you consider a consent calendar, as, as we spoke about just a few minutes ago.
Oh, yes.
If we could move item thirteen A, which is the APD agreement with NETL, and it's actually a MOU. If we could move that to the consent agenda, of course, if anybody's interested in specifics on it, Captain Lyles is here to address that, but if not, the preference is to move that to the consent agenda.
So, I plan, Counselor, I plan to move that to the consent calendar, so move item thirteen A to the consent calendar with those changes.
I move to adopt the consent calendar, including item thirteen A.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Oh.
Go ahead, Counselor.
I would like to pull item twelve C three for discussion and a separate vote.
Twelve C three.
It's the flag ordinance.
Governmental display?
Yes, governing the display of flags on city property.
Okay, so we're going to pull that and discuss it, so, make it, which way have to amend the motion, correct?
Yeah, amend the motion just to remove in that and approve the rest of the consent.
Who made the motion initially?
I made the motion, do I have to amend it?
Do you want to amend it?
I do not.
Does, does she have to amend it?
Any, a, a member of the council can request something to be pulled from the consent calendar, so.
All right, then I amend my motion to approve the consent calendar minus twelve C three, but adding item thirteen A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye with those changes.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. So we're going to talk about thirteen C, or C three right now, correct?
Correct.
So.
All right, thank you. On Monday's work session, I mentioned that members of the community and also some members of the council agreed that we ought only fly government flags from our flagpole, and it's, it, it's not anything personal, it's, it's the fact that this is City Hall, and the flag of Oregon represents all Oregonians, the flag of our country represents everyone who is here, and that is as inclusive as one can be. If you raise any other flag, you automatically exclude people, and I, I understand that we have folks on all ends of this way of looking at things, but I would like to reaffirm that only government flags should fly on government property. And I'd like to vote on that separately.
In discussion?
I'd like to address the question about political action committees, whether that constitute, is it the same as a political party? It is a political organization, and I believe that that would be covered under that section of the, we don't want to allow it, part of the policy. We don't, we're not, we don't, the policy says we're not.
We'll differentiate, it's political action.
Yeah, but, yeah, the, the gist of the policy is that we're not allowing any, endorsing or, or opposing any political direction or candidate.
Okay, so, City Attorney, we've had Counselors Novak made a motion, direct, am I correct?
No, she didn't make a motion.
She didn't make a motion, she just wanted to vote separately on this, which we already are.
So give me a second, I'm trying to get, so, go ahead, Sean.
Saying, she just made a, she, she didn't make a motion, she just said she wanted to vote on this, the flag displayed separately from the agenda, which we already did because we've pulled it. So now it's, if, if someone wants to make a motion to approve the resolution, they can, and you can vote on it separately, that's what we.
I would like to make a motion, if we're done, I was waiting for you to finish discussion, but before we're done, yep. I would like to move to approve the resolution of the Albany City Council governing the display of flags on city property.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Discussion.
Little discussion.
I'd just like to make a comment that, as a lifetime member of the VFW and DAV, I have no problems whatsoever in supporting this resolution as it's written, because it's very well-written, very well-structured from my perspective, and I have no qualms supporting it.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second, any other discussion before I call for the vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Thank you, motion passes five to one.
I thought you had said on Monday's work session, sir, that this needed to have a unanimous vote.
No, that was shot down then, it was actually suggested it. It was, it was.
Perhaps I misheard you.
No, I did say that, but it wasn't added to the resolution.
It wasn't what? I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
It wasn't.
Come closer to the mic, you're going further away.
It wasn't, it wasn't accepted by the council.
You put it to the council?
No.
I don't recall you putting it to the council, I just recall you saying that in matters like this, you believe that it needed to be unanimous. That's what I heard.
That's the opinion, it wasn't added to the motion, it's not Robert's rules.
There was no discussion.
There was no discussion, it just died at the council. So, next on the agenda is, where we add staff reports, or approval of agreements, no, that's part of the consent calendar. The staff, oh, business from the council. Because we moved thirteen A up to the consent calendar. So business from the council, I started over here last time, Counselor Novak, you first.
Okay, I, I do have a few items. All right. First of all, I want to say that I appreciate the ADA and the ABA and their passport program, and the good things that does bringing kids downtown and giving them something to do, and I am also appreciative of the Arts Council's involvement in that. Secondly, I have been speaking with various constituents, and I think there's some really good points that, that one gentleman with whom I spoke at length recently said, and I am very much in agreement, which is why I'm bringing it to you. I would like to see more support for the expo with collaboration between the events of the expo and downtown, or any business for that matter. The expo is a beautiful facility and a major asset to the city, and it, those events that take place there are, as he said, and I agree, similar to when a cruise ship docks in a port, you have people coming for dog shows, square dancing, whatever. Many businesses in our town directly benefit, including my own, so I would like to see more of that, and I would like to focus on things that bring, you know, that type of economic growth to our town. So I hope that we can do that. The other thing is, we need assistance in dealing with graffiti, and this does fit the TLT objective in that graffiti is becoming a major challenge, and that's not the way we want to show off Lynn County. So I, I want to bring that again to everyone's attention, that this is, this is becoming more of an issue, and we need to deal with it. The other thing is, I need staff to help me with regard to some information regarding the removal of large objects that are dumped on the street, especially furniture. The procedure, if we have one, is not visible on the city website, so I would appreciate if we could get that out there. Someone could develop it, and if it is there, if, I mean, if we have a procedure, it needs to be searchable and evident on the website so that people know what to do, because we're seeing more and more of that as well. So, that's everything I have, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Novak, I'm going to go with Steph, Counselor Newton, next.
Thanks. A few updates on my end, I was able to attend the grand opening, grand reopening of the Albany Regional Museum. It was fantastic, a great, a lot of great interactive displays, and a lot of really, I learned a lot of new things about Albany that I didn't know before, and I thought that was really important. And I have been doing research, so as, as Mike Garcia mentioned, he had called me, and I just dropped off my daughter at school, and so I swung by his house, and I, I think that it would be worthwhile to consider implementing a program similar to that of the City of Corvallis, they have a yellow curb program where residents can apply for permits to, you know, paint yellow curbs, where, where, and there's specific parameters, and I'll bring that to council at a later date.
With approval, yeah.
Yes. I also wanted to mention the Albany Garden Tour through the Garden Gate, this is a kind of a selfish plug, my home, my garden is on that tour, it's a great example of what your yard looks like, you have a full-time job, and you have two dogs and two kids, and it hasn't been a really great rainy season, you know? So, a lot of native plants, some dead grass, but the other homes are beautiful. And then, lastly, I do know that there's a, so I, I live near an artist, Jeremy Johnson, and he's working with, I believe Rebecca, from the Albany Visitors Association, to, you know, get folks together this June, I believe the date was June twenty-second, to draw on the sidewalks, and to, you know, for, for celebrating Pride, and there were thirty-three downtown businesses that had given permission to the Albany Visitors Association to decorate in front of their businesses with, with chalk, and I thought that that was awesome, and I'll try to join them, I want to encourage other people as well.
Thank you for that report.
You don't have to be an artist to join, Jackie, you can be a terrible artist like I am.
Counselor Kopczynski?
Yes, just a little heads up on some carousel news, we've had several people for the last several years working very, very hard and diligently on putting together a major, what I would call a coffee table book, about the carousel and how it's coming together, and it looks like, everything else being equal, by early fall, we will actually have those books on hand, will be in hardbound and soft cover, and sometime this fall, we will be announcing when we'll be taking pre-sale information for them, but I think you will be absolutely amazed at what the result's going to be when you see it, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Counselor Monogue.
That's exciting, I know some family in, that I have in Salt Lake that will be interested in that book, because we, we go down there every time they come to town. So I just wanted to publicly appreciate Counselor Smith for her ability to clarify some items that come before us. I really appreciate that you do that, and giving us kind of the history of what has happened. I know we jokingly call you the historian, but I do appreciate that, and I just wanted to publicly say thank you for that.
Counselor McGee?
Yeah, a few things, Lindbin Community College's graduation is tomorrow night at five thirty, getting closer to being done. I am introducing our student speakers, who I'm super excited about, she's a mentee of mine, so I'm excited about that. And then we will be dining at the Ciberus afterwards, so, see, that's the first thing. Second thing is, NAACP Lindbin County Branch will be hosting their Juneteenth event in Corvallis Community Center on Monday, I think at noon.
No, it starts at.
Five, sorry.
The business lot starts at four o'clock, and then, yeah.
I got a lot of events up here, okay? So anyway, but yeah, you can see that information, and then had a conversation with a person from, by the way, Peter, I, I had referred him to you, so go for that email. The person from, a person named Joshua M. Collins for the Coalition Against Bigger Trucks, talking about roads and how it's affecting traffic and bigger trucks rolling through Albany, you're at five. He spoke this morning for about twenty, thirty minutes, and he said he came here maybe in twenty nineteen and spoke with the. Okay, so he gave me a little bit of history, I listened to him and referred him to you, so just look out for that email. And I had a constituent I was on the phone with last week, I think for about twenty-seven minutes, who expressed their concern about the flag and its impact on our youth, and I think they just wanted to be heard, and that's fine, and so I told him I would bring it up to council, and so that's what I'm doing. Listened to her, she's a nurse, geriatric nurse, husband is a teacher in Lebanon, and she just expressed some concerns, and I said that I would bring it up to council about unintentional, how we as a council are unintentionally influencing our youth in a negative way, I guess, but that's all.
Okay, so Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Counselor Monogue, for thanking me. I, I try to, I try to, well, when I was running for office, I said that I would be nice, and I wouldn't lie, and I try very hard to control my temper sometimes, because I, I don't have patience with other liars, and with people who cast aspersions on honest, hard-working people who are doing their best to keep the, the public purse full and responsibly spent, and so I, I, I know that, that rage is hard to conceal, but I have to speak up sometimes, because I, I, there are short memories, and there are people with selective memories who simply don't attend every meeting that the City Council has, they don't watch the videos, they don't read the minutes, they don't, they don't look up from their keyboards, they don't leave their houses, they don't know how hard people are working here to spend every penny properly and to save those pennies to be spent later on things that we really need. So, thank you for letting me say that tonight, I hope I didn't come off as a lunatic, but I guess I just had it. I don't have anything else really to say, I've, I've had a lot of correspondence from people asking questions about the flag policy. I have counselor friends in other cities in Oregon who are watching what we're doing, and were, have asked me for copies of our policy to use as a potential template for their communities. They're also going through the House Bill thirty-one fifteen sanctioned camping pains, trying to get things set up, and, and wondering whether they even have to do it, and they're, they're looking to us as an example. I, I think that's, that's going to be happening more often now that we are, we're a big city, we're the eleventh largest city in the state of Oregon, and that is, we have a responsibility to other cities who are smaller, and some who are larger, who, who may not have found their way in, in some of those things that we're working on, we're, we've worked on a lot of things before other cities did, and we're continuing to do that, and I'm really proud of that, and glad to be a part of it. So, I, I just wanted to acknowledge that with everybody who's here, who's working hard, we're headed in the right direction, and I'm, I'm glad to be on the train.
Here, here, thank you, Counselor Smith. Love her. We have to go to a vote because we're three minutes over nine o'clock. Counsel, can I go ahead and finish this meeting, we're almost done? You guys okay with that?
Yeah, I would move to continue the meeting until we're done, which is soon.
I promise you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I gotta get to the target, let's hurry it up.
I have fifteen things to talk about tonight. So first and foremost, I appreciate all of you for your comments and your thoughtful, thoughtful way of communicating how you feel about being on council and the city, and we have a wonderful staff, and I, honestly, I brag about our staff, our police department, our Public Works, our EMTs, our fire department. I mean, I just, I can't tell you how I feel when I go to other mayors and they're bringing their problems to me, saying, "How do you solve that?" I say, "I don't, I'm a city manager and executive staff that does a great job." We have managers that do a great job. Employees that do a great job. And it's an honor to me to be the mayor and also just be delivering this community. Because the first 26 years, 25 years, I didn't know where City Hall was, quite frankly. And if it wasn't for that man over there, I wouldn't be sitting here. So I do have a few things to talk about. This weekend, Will Tucker and I welcomed 400 of the motor coaches rally, the Motor Northwest Rally was here in town. And it was wonderful to see these people from Alabama and Tennessee and Utah and Idaho. And they come here every year, and they, they have the trial to go downtown to the carousel. They eat food in our restaurants. They bought stuff. And they had a genuine blast in the city of Albany. And there was also Albany residents participating in those events. It was really wonderful. So we'll welcome them back next year. I met with Bandana Strasta from ARP Oregon. She approached me about, she knows how I feel about our senior community. And she approached me about proposing to come to talk to us about Albany being an age-friendly city. And with that comes some things from ARP, but I'm excited about it. And so I'll be bringing that to council, you know, to staff to take a look at, and then hopefully bring something to council. And I've already do a presentation. So I'm excited, and so councillor McGee, I met with, for initial meeting with College Housing Northwest. They specifically build affordable housing for people enrolled in college. So President Avery was there, so I'll definitely invite you to the next meeting. They're looking at between 300 and 500 units in the city of Albany somewhere. And so we just, I met with them. Matthew Rutgers has contacted with, connected with them as well. So I'm just excited about meeting with and fill that need because LBCC needs that. Oh, I went to the grand opening of Hub City. And all the councillors are except for you because you're out of town, and you weren't there. Were you there?
I wasn't. I was at the pre-garden tour.
Okay, now you're, you're taking care of city business. That's great.
Yes.
It was wonderful to hear the work that had gone into this six-year development of this project. And to hear Stacy, councillor, former councillor Bartholomew's story about being homeless and, and the things she went through in her life growing up. And to see her and the people who are part of that project, the look on their face of, it's, it's time, right? They're getting to work now. The shovel's going in the ground. And it was a very emotional thing to see her do this. And she exposed me to tiny home villages. When I was a city councillor, she invited me to see Emerald Village down in Eugene. And I didn't think it was possible, but they broke ground right here in Albany. And that's amazing to me, so. And Senator Wyden sent his remarks, oh, Senator Merkley, Senator Merkley sent his remarks. So I appreciated that. There's a new cheesecake place in town called Beloved. Go. Just, I'll just say about that. I met with the mayor, so 35 mayors have been to Albany to meet with me and kind of walk around downtown. And Mayor Horr from Salem came down here, and he put something in my ear about single-building urban renewal districts. And I never heard of that before. So I'll be reaching out to you, Matthew, to kind of figure out what that looks like. He's going to send me the information. So that's on your plate. See, House Bill 3115, councillor Smith is right. People are looking at what we're doing. They want to know what we're doing with it. I've gotten phone calls from other mayors on the listserv with Oregon Mayors Association. And we're, we're leading the way in that, in a lot of areas. And I don't know what my other note says, but I'm going to turn over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's not the habit of our staff to brag, so I'm glad that, or even to talk about successes and accomplishments, or very rarely anyway. So councillor Smith, thank you for weighing in there. Just while we were sitting here for the last half hours, thinking about the composting that's been started out at the wastewater treatment plant. That's entirely on employees' initiative. Not only do they start composting, which helps us save dollars transferring bio-solids to the, to the dump, but it also, but they also then started growing plants there that they could use, that the Parks Department could use, so they don't have to buy them from a nursery.
That's awesome.
And these kinds of things happen all the time. I'm thinking of the LED lighting projects that we do, which stand to save literally tens, if not hundreds, of thousands of dollars over four or five more years. The pipe bursting that you approved tonight, which is a much, much more efficient way of conducting some of our work. In the last meeting, you talked about, Chris Shendell brought you authorization to allow CSOs to write parking tickets, which makes it a lot less expensive for us to accomplish that, that mission. So there are lots and lots of these examples. They happen all the time. Just because they're not flaunted doesn't mean they don't, don't happen. You know how important and what a priority stewardship and integrity are to me. So I want to note that Monday is Juneteenth, so City Hall is closed. You have, on the 26th of June, we, we have canceled your council meeting. Now, another, another thing I want to point out is that time is a resource, just like money. So we had the potential of having three meetings that week with the joint meeting with Benton County's Board of Commissioners and a council meeting on the 28th as well. So the work session on the 26th has been canceled to try to save you and staff a little bit of time. I know it's a long meeting tonight, so I appreciate your forbearance as we went through eight public hearings. That's quite a bit, but sometimes, you know, this workload of yours doesn't happen in a steady stream. Also, let's see here, that, I mentioned the 27th of June is a joint meeting with Benton County's Board of Commissioners. The subjects at this point for that agenda are road transfer agreements, and I'll send this out to you. Don't need to write it down. The Corvallis-Albany path, and electric vehicle infrastructure from a regional perspective. And then public safety concerns in North Albany. And again, I'll send that to you.
Is traffic on that list, or is that just part of public safety?
Yeah, well, I mean, it's, it's, I don't know what comes, Chief Harden has that. So I don't know if she's including, I doubt that traffic is in that. The public safety is probably more of a criminal nature. And then lastly, I appreciated councillor Montague acknowledging her attendance at a planning commission meeting. And I wanted to ask the city attorney to comment a little bit on, especially for those to whom it may not be readily apparent, why there's real problems and sensitivities with, with that.
Thanks. I'll be real fast. So, yeah, again, we appreciate councillor Montague tonight for declaring that she had expertise communication by attending the planning commission meeting. That isn't ideal for, for me as the attorney in the event something happens at Luba, for you guys to go to the planning commission meetings. And the reason behind that is there's many instances where that's the final stop at the planning commission, unless it's appealed. And if it's appealed, it's appealed to you, and you become then the judge in that case. The standard of review in that is called the de novo, which means new, with fresh eyes. If you have participated or watched the underlying hearing, you can't participate, you can't be a judge viewing something with fresh eyes and new. And so it, it's gonna, there's situations where we can be reversed or remanded by Luba back for, for that happening. So it's, it makes it easier for, I know sometimes you're curious of what they do, but if you look at it, when you're going to be a judge in something, if you were going to appeal a case that you were, say you were wrongly convicted of something, and you were appealing that case, but you knew the judge that was going to hear the case that sat and watched the trial below, you would think, well, he's already got an opinion or she's already got an opinion. She, they have to. They watched the other case. They can't go into with fresh eyes and say, well, let's hear this new. So it's just, it's just more preferable if you, if you don't. And if you do, if you do, then you definitely want to, like councillor Montague did tonight, declare that you have, if it's something that could be appealed to you, then if it is, you would need to recuse yourself and not participate in the city council hearing because then it wouldn't be the de novo. That's, so. But thanks again for that, and that's all I have.
I have one more thing, Peter.
Yes, sir.
Council, Peter's, our city manager's eval is due by June 30. So you got that? So city manager's eval is due by June 30, so please put some time towards that. And that's all I have right now. So are we done, Peter? Are you done?
Yes, thank you.
So next meeting, like Peter mentioned, be Tuesday, June 22nd, 2023, at 3:30 PM. Are we meeting here or there?
That, that's Tuesday.
27. Is here in council chambers, correct?
Yeah, yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Now, will they be joining us up on a dais or will we be down there?
We'll be down here.
Okay. And then Wednesday night, June 28th to 2023, at 6:30, 6:00 PM, we're here. And with that, I'll adjourn the meeting. You're killing me.